Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call our Monday, October 7th City Council Work Session Order. Thank you, those who are joining us in the audience and those who may be tuning in remotely. At this time, as with every meeting, we typically start with an invocation and we will right on time. Councilmember Deacon Thompson, if he could give us an invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly dear Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for another day and another opportunity we get to praise and lift up and magnify your name, Heavenly Father. We thank you for all those who are here today, that these proceedings will go according to your word and your will and your way. As we come together, Heavenly Father, we also want to mention those on the western part of our fellow North Carolinians on the western part of North Carolina. I am thankful that we can come together as one to support those in need. The Bible tells us to love thy neighbor as we love ourselves, Heavenly Father. So we thank you for the love that's in our hearts. So put a little bit of heart and love in our hearts and some heart and love, Heavenly Father, that we can do your will. Bless these proceedings and all things that's going to happen this evening, Heavenly Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If we can do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trustee Thompson, I'm sorry, I called you Deacon, but thank you for the prayer. Stuart, okay, I'll get it right in a little bit. All right. The councilors, we move on to the next item, City Manager's report. Mr. Manager, if you, as you're giving a report, you want to talk to us about maybe what assistance we help Asheville with?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mayor and members of council, we actually have our emergency management coordinator and fire chief here as well, and I'd ask that she'd come forward and share him what we're doing in western Fayetteville as well as a brief update on what looks like could be Hurricane Milton in Florida.
Hello?
Hello, hello. Okay, we will start, good afternoon, everyone first. We'll start with Hurricane Milton. Hurricane Milton is now a category five and expected to impact North Carolina at zero percent. It's just going to go from west to east Florida, and by the time it reaches the other side of Florida, be a category one. So they're expecting heavy storm surge and all of those by Wednesday timeframe. So it's definitely going to be a major hurricane and stay a major hurricane by the time it hits landfall. All right, now for our western North Carolina efforts. Currently, we have about thirty people deployed. All but two of those folks are employed with the city of Fayetteville either through police department or fire department. They are on missions for search and rescue hazardous materials and helping with security and other measures to help folks get supplies. All of those folks are with us through state request, Metro Chiefs Association and a police chiefs association. As for donations, I've reached out to the state and they are requesting no donations in the form of tangibles at this time. They have an overabundance of items with no intended recipient and they don't know what to do with them. They don't want the items to go to waste. That's not to say there wouldn't be a time for something like that, but right now they are asking that if we do anything to do that in monetary support. And the state has partnered with the United Way specifically, but there are some others out there such as Samaritan's Purse, American Red Cross, Salvation Army, all of those. All of our local chapters are accepting monetary donations for those chapters. And locally, on Thursday at Northwood Temple, we're all familiar with Southern Cole's barbecue. I do know that they're having a plate sale from eleven AM to six. All of their proceeds and contributions will go directly to western North Carolina. So to give you some numbers that the state has put out, as of ten o'clock this morning, and this is the state executive summary for this morning, one hundred and forty thousand were without power. I do note that looking at the report, prior to coming here, there was another town that was about ninety percent restored, so that's good. There are fifteen counties in the western part of the state that have their EOCs activated. Twenty-five counties have declared states of emergency. There are still eighteen shelters open. To date, approximately a hundred thousand individuals have filed for FEMA assistance with thirty-three million haven't been distributed. We all know that the news is reporting about two hundred fatalities in the affected areas. Seventy-seven of those have been confirmed with North Carolina. As far as roads, there are still over six hundred roads that remain closed due to flooding, trees, downed power lines. They have two thousand DOT employees out there trying to get all of that cleared up, ready to go. So the state is still encouraging no traveling west, which is why they don't really want tangible goods in a donation. So what can we continue to do is just support our first responders. This is very much a marathon and we're in the five K portion of it, so it's going to be a long road for all of our people in western North Carolina. So just keep them in your thoughts, keep supporting our first responders as they transition in and out and go on different missions. There may come a time when the city can offer additional assistance such as in damage assessments, et cetera, and I can brief you all on what phase we're at next month if you'd like. Can I say any questions?
So if anybody doesn't have any questions, I have a question or kind of a statement. As soon as this all happened, I know that I've got phone calls and I'm sure everybody around the table here did get phone calls. What is the city doing? What can we do to help? Things like that. And I don't know if I'm completely off base saying this, but I feel that maybe we should do some type of press release or something or a Facebook post of you explaining exactly what you explained to us because everybody in a crisis wants to get out and what you're telling us is a lot of the things that people are feeling that they should be doing is kind of hindering the process of getting through. So I didn't know if we had to, do I leave that for the mayor, mayor pro temp meeting or do we discuss that here? Does anybody have any issues with it?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that and I would even ask Laura in chief and chief to also not only say it from us, but to also pull in the people from the state who are boots on the ground, so to speak, to share it as well. But as she said and as you all have communicated as well, when the time is right, we're ready to help and assist. We just need to make sure it's done in the appropriate manner.
Right. It's very hard because everything is coming from a very generous place, but we don't want to cause a hindrance or put anyone else at risk that doesn't need to be at risk.
And I think, you know, we can put it out in a press release for people to read, but I think a video, people listen to it more. And I think that it'll make people feel good and then when we do need to come back around in a month or two months, maybe we will have the resources instead of everybody tapping out. Just my opinion, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief Duff, do you have something?
I just want to echo what Laura was saying and we also would like to share thank you to the council and to the city manager's office and to the rest of the city for supporting our deployments. Our folks are seeing some things that nobody should see, but they're working as hard as they can every day. We switched out our crews on Saturday. We sent another eighteen up and the state has asked us if we can continue to stay till at least the eighteenth, so we're looking at another switch out probably this weekend. So we'll keep everybody up to speed on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Temp. I definitely think this should be a full council discussion, not just the mayor, mayor pro temp meetings. I think that our emergency services person said they can probably bring it back in a month and see how things have progressed and whether there's a different ask. Because my question is always, I think that the city manager and his staff have been able to do a lot just on their own accord, but where is the line between that sort of executive action and then authorization from council? I just want to make sure that we're a part of that conversation and can greenlight, you know, what needs to be greenlit from our perspective as well, especially if sometimes, you know, our city staff can say, you know, we can go this far, but without more authority or more authorization, you know, there may be a place for the city council to be able to say it is actually the council's interest and the city's interest to do even more. So I'd like to see what that looks like a month from now for sure. So maybe if that's the motion that we can make, that we get an update a month from now to go from there.
So I guess my question is, my ask was just for them to do a video of what they told us.
That's great.
It had nothing to do with action. It was just for us to tell our residents what the city of Fayetteville is doing up in Asheville to see their, that's all that. I wasn't asking for anything other than us, instead of doing a press release, doing a video or a press release on video to show all the things that they have said.
I might have misunderstood what you said about mayor, mayor pro temp only discussion, that's why.
No, I just said, is this where we can have open discussion about it or do I need to go to mayor, mayor pro temp and then bring it back? I didn't know if that's the question that I was asking.
Right. Yeah, okay. So I guess separate from the video, I definitely would want to see where we're at a month from now so we can maybe authorize some more as a full council.
And just want to kind of add to that. Thank you. Apologize I missed the briefing, but just having gone through it a few times, the coordination is important. And I know we want to help, but if you're not in line with the state's leadership on coordination, who's in line with FEMA's coordination, because you've got the whole country really coming to the aid of Asheville, so we don't want to be in the way. We don't want to have people use resources that are not used. So we definitely hear for guidance purposes and I think if it comes to a point where the manager has a decision to make, if he thinks it goes beyond whatever the state's guidance is, then I think that would generate some action. But, you know, the goal of asking you to do this was to kind of tell our residents in the community what's going on and what we're doing.
Yeah, so definitely if you are going to donate monetarily, make sure that you're going through vetted sources. Absolutely. You don't want to, you know, in times of trouble, you don't want to be taken advantage of. So the state does have a list of vetted voluntary organizations that do take donations. I'd be happy to get you that list if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Banks, we're glad to hear your light.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp. I was going to say, I think that that's a great idea and just like you mentioned as far as ways to support financially, a lot of people in the community don't know and you have different organizations or different people setting up sites where people are sending money and they're, you know, trying to be generous and being taken advantage of. So I think as a city, we should highlight some of the things that we are doing and possibly, like you mentioned, maybe have a list of organizations that are accepting donations and also too highlighting our police officers and our fire department because they're, you know, here to serve the city, but they're, you know, now helping, you know, victims in the west part of North Carolina. So I think we should definitely highlight our team. They're doing a great job. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, when we did it before, it was kind of regular, so you want to, I mean, is it something you can have our emergency management, I don't know.
Further update?
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. He had a motion for consensus, just to reaffirm updates, those in favor. All right. Thank you. All right. So council moving, Mr. Manager, is that it? Oh, Madam Attorney has said that she would ask for a closed session, which we can do now or we can do it as we move into some of these other items. Madam Attorney, is it an extensive conversation?
I just have a few items to run down. One of them is about what, an item on the agenda though. Item six point zero six.
Okay. So you need the closed session prior to the discussion of that?
Yes, Mayor Cohen.
All right. So council, y'all want to have a motion to go into closed session and knock this out? All right. Motion by Councilmember Thompson, the second by Benevente, discussion. All right, those in favor going into closed session? All right, see you across the hall, relevant parties.
All right, we're back in session. So, we are going to go to the city manager. He has one announcement to make.
Thank you, Mayor Protemin. Thank you, Mayor Colvin, council. When we were doing our update a moment ago about the City of Fayetteville's response to Helene, I forgot to mention, I think, one of the most critical assessments or thank yous that I could make, which was that for about seventy-two hours during the brunt of Hurricane Helene, Buncombe County's entire 911 system rolled over when they couldn't handle calls to the City of Fayetteville. And so, for seventy-two hours, our 911 operators were handling the bulk of, the overflow bulk of calls from the Buncombe County 911, and it was extreme. Some of the stories and that they were hearing from people who were calling in who needed help were things that they don't hear very often, so much in fact that we are actually doing some additional counseling support for them for some of the things they heard to recognize all that they did and continue to do every day, particularly for the rollover during Helene. The staff, senior staff and I went up last week and thanked them hardly for all of their efforts. But I'd be remiss if I didn't also say that we sent people there, but we also had people here who were also supporting the disaster response, because it was actually in the middle of response for Hurricane Helene and entirety of Buncombe County. It was so much in fact that it overwhelmed our 911, too, and we had to ship some of our calls down to New Hanover County, just to tell you the volume of calls that we were receiving and they were receiving as well. So, again, just hearty thank you to our city staff.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Thank you to our 911 staff and for a great job that you always do. Councilors, we move to approve the agenda. Remember the deletion of item 6.06. Can we have a motion? Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I move that we approve the agenda with the exception of item number 6.06.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Benevente, second by Councilmember McNair. Discussion on that. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on the system. All right, who are we missing? All right. Motion carries unanimous. All right, moving to 6.01, Fort Liberty and City of Fayetteville Partnerships.
I'm right behind you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protemin, council. I am here before you this afternoon to share some exciting partnership opportunities. We have a long partnership with Fort Liberty. We are, Ms. Jensen, the largest neighbor to the largest military installation in the world, and we are extremely proud to do that and to support our military service members, their families, and our force readiness. In one of your previous strategic plan TFAs, targets for action, we had to develop and strengthen our military connection in the community, and we've done a lot of work with that. We've strengthened our military host cities coalition through the League of Municipalities. We have regular communication with the Garrison Commander and the installation and a number of touchpoints. And we've also fleshed out what a framework might be if we had a military affairs program here with the city. One of the most exciting partnerships, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Lauren Beimer over there for a lot of his work in these efforts as well. So, one of the most exciting partnerships we have today is to look at an intergovernmental service agreement with Fort Liberty. And we first started exploring this and researching this when they started, I think it was back in 2002, early 2000s. The city looked at what that might look like for us. We then looked at a variety of services, and we already have service agreements in place beginning in 2013 to do janitorial at the Airborne and Special Operations Museum. It was around December 2013 that we entered into that. We expanded that in 2021 to add grounds maintenance for ASOM, so we already have a strong partnership in place there. And then, of course, a couple of years ago, we entered into the lease agreement for the construction of the MacArthur Sports Complex. So, we were recently approached about expanding this to include new service deliveries in this, what we call an ICSA model. And the two concepts that we're looking at now and working with Fort Liberty on are solid waste management and elevator maintenance. This would not mean that staff is out there doing refuse collection on Fort Liberty. For us right now, it means that we're managing a contract, and there's mutual benefits for the installation and for the city to do that work. We have with us this afternoon the Deputy Director for Fort Liberty's Department of Public Works, Mr. Lawrence Pico. You can come on up here. And I wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about what the benefits of an ICSA are, what this means for our city. What we're going to be looking for you, council, today is to give us consensus that this is, this is a direction we want to continue to go in. There's benefit to the city. There is benefit to the installation. This means we can invest in our city while strengthening, strengthening our military friends. So...
Hello, everyone.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Lawrence Pico, Deputy Director of Public Works, Fort Liberty. Here just to talk about IXes real quick. Essentially, anything, you know, Fort Liberty is like a little city, too. So, anything that you guys are doing, we're also doing, most likely. So, what we just talked about was trash and, or refuse and elevators. You know, for the, probably until the end of time, I think Fort Liberty will continue to generate trash. So, we'll always have a need to remove that, that refuse. IXes are ten years agreement that are, ten-year agreements that are indefinitely renewable. So, we see this as a mutually beneficial opportunity to kind of be, be partners for as long as, as long as there's going to be refuse and elevators and things like that to take care of. See this as just a first step, and there's infinite more opportunities to partner on other municipal services and things like that. So, happy to be here and glad we're all doing this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Counsel, any comments, questions? Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we are collaborating with the city for bus services. Nobody mentioned that. Can you allow me?
That's a great one. We don't have the ICSA there, but we've been working with the installation with the Garrison Commander on their bus service. But that is certainly a priority. I think, I thought I saw Tiffany in the room right there, and Kelly. They've been working with them on getting the information to do the evaluation of what that might look like. But that is absolutely is, as he mentioned, there is a wealth of opportunity that we can then take in this partnership. So, it's in the room.
Do we currently service their PX with bus service, though? I think we do.
Yeah, we're looking to expand a lot of that.
I'm prepared to make a motion that we continue this collaboration with Fort Liberty and the City of Fayetteville when it's time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson, and seconded by Councilmember Harry. Discussion on this. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for action. Who are we missing, Madam Clerk? Councilmember Hodras. What you down there doing? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Yes, yes, sir.
As we collaborate with Fort Liberty on a number of things, when it comes down, at least what is that, the Merksen Rule corridor area, the Bragg Boulevard corridor area, especially out there where we come into I-295, as far as keeping that area clean. I don't see this here. I don't know if that's a form of a partnership.
You're talking trash pickup?
Yeah. Is that a form of partnership that we could start considering to partner on? I didn't see any. That's why I kept zipping through that. Is that something that we could?
Off, off, off post, the areas in the city. So, the solid waste management contract we're looking at right now is specifically for the areas on the installation. Yes, sir. But if you have an interest in those other areas, we're certainly open to talking about it, and there may be some opportunities for like a Fayetteville Beautiful and some other things that we could... Yep.
Yeah, that does sound good.
Yeah, in a sense, he deals with you mainly, but you're just talking about the in-between cleanups.
Right.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just add one thing about collaboration that I think is very, very important. And a lot of people don't realize the logistical responsibilities of the 295 extension. From exit 33, I believe, to exit 25 is run by the county. From exit 25 to exit 18 is run by Fort Liberty. From exit 18 to Fort 12, exit 12 is run by the city. And we know that, we call that the speedway now. So, I'm glad to see a lot of those Fort Liberty soldiers out there monitoring that and issuing tickets to get people to slow down. There was two major accidents on 295 in the past two weeks, just before you get to exit 14, 15, before you get to Cliffdale Road. They pretty much stalled traffic for hours. So, I thank you for doing your part in keeping traffic to a minimum. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Thank you, sir, for visiting. Counsel, city manager, you have something?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Pico, for, for coming as well. I want to just say to council that thank you for allowing us to move forward and exploring this. But we, this is a major line of business. And so, before we would proceed with this, we will do our due diligence, and we will bring it back to council because...
we will bring it back to Council, because the last thing we want to do is be the largest neighbor to the largest military base that lets them down. So, we want to make sure that we have the capacity to do this and do it well, and we'll, we will do that. This would be managed, um, just if it was not mentioned fully, uh, would not be city staff doing the collection, this would be through contracts, which is what, uh, Fort Liberty actually has at the moment. And, um, we will, um, again, bring this back, um, fully for Council so that you're aware and supportive of the work that we're doing. Thank you, Mayor.
And when you, when you bring that back, can you talk about, like, the animal control? We don't handle animal control, we defer that in the city to the county.
To the county.
So, is this, is this a county-involved service that?
Um, uh, not sure if, um, Pico, if you know that, whether the county actually does, um, animal control on post?
Yeah. Bet you would be looking to contract out or to partner with us. Cause I see it mentioned here, that's the reason I brought it up.
Those are future looks that potentially, I guess, that y'all might be interested in.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council. Uh, Council, moving to 6.22, um, the, uh, funding for Saint of Old Friendship Alliance cultural visit.
Well, as they're coming up, um, Jennifer Pam, could you orient us to what the Council's, um, discussion was at this last session?
At the last regular meeting, uh, there was a motion made to table this item to this meeting to have further discussion, and that was a unanimous vote. So, and we have two representatives here today from the Fayetteville, uh, Saint of Old Friendship Alliance.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome you all.
Thank you. I'm on behalf of, uh, Friendship Alliance, not really Manna.
Oh, good.
Anyway, uh, we're here to request the funding for the, uh, visit of our French people that are coming. We have 12 French people, I'm sorry. Uh, Sylvia James, I'm sorry, and this is Stacy Ferry. Uh, Chris couldn't be here today, she's at work. So, we have 12 people coming from Saint of Old France, uh, nine teachers and three students, high school students that are coming. We are needing to house them for 12 days, and also we are requesting funds for a van, a 15-passenger van to transport from the airport, transport them back to the airport, uh, on October 30th. And, uh, they're going to, um, visit several areas here in the Fayetteville area, such as, um, FSU, Fayetteville State, Fayetteville Technical College, uh, they're going all the way up to Duke University, uh, they'll be traveling to Massey Hill High School, Cape Fear High School, uh, up to Raleigh to look at some of the museums. And, um, of course, they'll be doing some tours here in, um, Fayetteville area with, uh, Bruce Dawes, uh, learning about the Fayetteville history. Uh, we're trying to reestablish the educational exchange for the Saint of Old and the high school students here at Cape, Cape Fear Valley High School and Massey High School. I think this is our third attempt to try and secure funds for this. I believe in June, we submitted money, a request for money. Uh, we came to the first, uh, the last Council meeting and requested funds, and it was, uh, tabled to today. So, we appreciate anything that you would, uh, like to offer for us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Benevente.
Yes, uh, City Manager Hewitt, um, and I had a conversation about, um, about, um, maybe a, a direction that the city staff were wanting to recommend as it relates to the city's activities on this front. I mean, we want Fayetteville to have an international presence and context, um, but perhaps, um, the staff had a recommendation on how to make that a, a more, um, so, so something that City Council could have a little bit more, uh, of a hand on.
So, Councilmember, I, I think, uh, and I'll certainly let the manager speak for himself, one, one of the, the questions that I think were raised, um, was, you know, this came out of our Sister City program and, but, um, this particular component, th, this organization, I guess, is a, is a separate and private entity that happens to be in alignment with this one particular area of the Sister City program. And, you know, it was, it was, um, my hope was that we could put some structure around where, however we're going to treat that, but I, I'd be interested to hear the manager's response to your question about, uh, specifics of that.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and Councilmember Benevente, that's exactly what I was going to share. I think that there are, um, really two questions in front of you. The larger one, I think, is the one that you and the mayor are, are touching on, which is, we have a sister-city relationship with Saint of Old that we've had for some time. Um, and, uh, but at the same time, we have explored in the past, um, and Mayor, I may need your help here, your memory is better than mine, but we had also explored other potential, um, sister-city relationships called twinning, when you, um, connect with another city is called twinning. And those would be, uh, locations that could be for cultural, it could be for economic, it could be for educational, it could be for historical, and that would be a, um, a way to, for, for Fayetteville to reach the world. Right now, our connection is with Saint of Old.
Correct.
But for a number of years, um, the city council, um, and the city of Fayetteville does not have, on city staff or on city council, a connection with Saint of Old, except for the visits that we do or the informal things that we do throughout the year. We had a much larger presence, I guess, at Fayetteville's 250th, and sometimes when they come over, we all remember, um, the mayor, Pascal and others who've come over and visited us. And so I think one of the questions you have is a, is a bigger question is, what does the city of Fayetteville and city council want to do as it relates to formalizing or standing up, if you choose, a sister-city program to match the fact that we have a sister-city and have had for some time at, with Saint of Old? Applaud and commend all of the work of the volunteers and everything that they're doing, but is that the city of Fayetteville or is that a private group? So, that's one, that my suggestion would be if you are interested in that, and I mentioned this, I think, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem at our meeting and to you as well, that that could be an ask that Council could put on staff, I mean, maybe a, a little ad hoc committee or maybe one of your other boards of commissions, to come back with something to consider for si, for more formalized structure for sister-city, um, and do that in 60, 90 days, and definitely in time for your, um, retreat in January. That's a bigger question. I think it's one that we've toyed with. I know Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and other members who've been involved with the FEEDC, um, Robert Van Gheens and others have actually identified, I think, a couple of cities that they feel culturally, economically, um, uh, may foster that type of relationship that we want, which is the whole purpose of the sister-city. So, that's one, but I think you also have an immediate question before you, which is you have nine?
Nine teachers.
Nine teachers.
Three high school students coming on the 18th of October.
Right.
Staying till the 30th of October.
Right. And to, to put it in context, I think the request was for?
15,000. The, the housing alone at the McPherson House for all these?
Right.
Is it only about $9,000?
Right. And so, one of the things that we would, um, tip, when we, and the first request we gave, I think the city council allocate, Pam, I don't remember if you recall, what was it, the first time?
Last year.
The, uh, 6,000?
I think it was around 8,000.
8,000. Um, and of course, we had our trip as well. There's not another board of commission for which the council has allocated 18 to 20,000 dollars. Not saying it's right or wrong, but I think, I appreciate Ms. Sylvia, I think it was?
Yes, correct.
Um, uh, you know, if the council's inclined to do whatever you choose, um, but, um, that is, 15 is, is, is real money.
And, and Mayor Colvin, just so I can wrap up and then I can get off the mic, um, I choose to look at it more of like, not the big issue and the little issue, but rather first things first, I think the city council needs to, uh, be, uh, to have a conversation about how we want to work on all this, and that's first things first. So, um, you know, when the time is ready, if there's no other, no further discussion, I just want to make a motion today, what, without, what I feel comfortable and prepared to do is to direct staff to, um, bring about that, um, recommendation in time for our strategic planning meeting on how we want to pursue Fayetteville in this international context. Um, and, and that's all I feel comfortable doing today.
All right. I, I did have, uh, Councilmember Davis had his light.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I, it's, appears that we're going to have some teachers and stuff like that coming, right? Have you guys, um, first question is, have you guys reached out to the county to see if the school board will allow some funding for you all?
No, not to my knowledge.
No, the, the individual schools are assisting and paying for lunches and, and different things for them, um, t-shirts and stuff to, to, to help commemorate their visit. Um, we did reach out to the county, I'm not sure they provided us any funding, but we did reach out to the county also for additional funds. But the majority of this is it will be actually funded by our, uh, fundraising that we did as a group.
Okay. Do you guys know exactly how much you guys, um, were able to come up with?
Right now? Off the top of my head, I think?
Maybe, I don't think it's $2,000 at the garage sale, and then by still day was a couple thousand dollars.
And then, um, Gillie Shaw made sure that she sent us, uh, $5,000, because part of the reason why we have this sister-city program specifically with Saint of Old is because her brother is buried there.
Understood.
So, um, she wanted to make sure that this was funded. So, she gave us a nice donation.
Okay.
A couple of other people have stepped up and given us money.
Got you. Mayor, um, Council, I wouldn't, um, be opposed to matching whatever they raised and matching that amount, because the, the mayor, um, city manager said $15,000 is a bit of chalk, and, um, maybe we can match what they already have. Um, that's, that's an option, but thank you.
All right. Um, and also, to Counsel, as you, as you unpacked this, um, some of what I heard, because, you know, my, my thing is that I wanted, when this came up, for us to have some consistency about, you know, what, nothing related to your organization, but when another organization comes up, what is our policy to write a check? But in-kind services, I know we've done, um, so I heard him say something about transportation in a passenger van, which we do have from, in, you know, Parks and Rec, that if that could be, you know, a possibility of, of, you know, they're coming into our airport, they have a couple of other places to go. We have a van that we use when guests arrive, that could be something that is kind of a little bit more in line with what we've done, but, uh, I'll, I'll leave it to Council's discussion, discretion. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I definitely, you know, want to address, I think, the, the big, the, not just the bigger issue, but the first issue is that, you know, we can have our city staff come back to us with, uh, that we want to proceed, um, as it relates to, um, you know, Fayetteville in that international context. So, I still want to make that motion. Um, as far as discussion about transportation or in-kind services, I think that, again, is going to be something that, if we want to remain consistent, um, another request can come in, maybe, you know, now that we've kind of given some feedback, uh, to this group and, and to any future group who's listening to this, that, you know, they can ask for in-kind things. You know, I know we provided the stage, you know, with that mobile, you know, Fayetteville Cumberland stage when, when that was appropriate, um, but I think that it's not our place right now to necessarily assume that, I mean, it sounds like we, we have somewhat of an idea of how much they've raised, but we're not even sure about those numbers, it sounds like. So, you know, if they wanted to come back to us with whatever that dollar figure is, and then maybe a request for, um, you know, the transportation that they could do that, but today, as far as what we can for sure say, is that we want to have our staff come back to us, um, with, uh, that, that, that work product that, that Doug had described, um, and that any other, you know, more tailored ask, you know, we can certainly wait to receive that, um, and then, you know, entertain that at a future meeting.
All right. So, I'll come to your motion in just a second. I got Mayor Pro Tem, who I didn't see her light.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have a few questions, and before I ask my question, um, my understanding of the Saint of Old and everything that, um, the, the committee that came through, I know that, um, it has, it was very active for a while, and then it wasn't active because it was down at another, and there was a, um, that it wasn't a priority. So, my understanding is this group came up and said, okay, we're going to make it a priority. And with that coming, the mayor came here, we had three council members go to France, and I don't think we've had that done in, what, 10, 15 years?
The, the mayor coming from France was the first time ever coming to Fayetteville. So, it was very historic.
And then, when our people went over there, it had been, what, 10, 15 years? That, it'd been a long time. So, y'all, y'all revived what Saint of Old was. Um, I sat in the things with the EDC, with Robert, and I think that we don't need to mix, because what Saint of Old is and what we were talking about for economic development, I think were two different things. Cause when we were in the meeting for economic development, it was more of bringing industry back here. As I remember, this was more of a, you know, naming each other, a friendship kind of coalition thing. Um, I do believe that if, you know, we want this relationship to continue, which I do, um, that there needs to be a set budget every year, and if you want to spend that money for this and this and this, that's fine, and after that, that's it. You know, is, is the city going to do their goodwill towards the Saint of Old? Now, where I think the issue comes is, these people are coming October 16th.
18th.
18th. So, my question is, when was it decided that they were going to come?
I, I'm, I can't answer that.
So.
I want to say it was that, that the, it arose at the visit in May.
That, that was my understanding, that it arose when our delegation was over there. So, I guess my question is, to the three that were there, were you part of this conversation? So, is this the first time that y'all have heard about? Because we're here at the 11th hour, nine teachers are coming, three students are coming.
Well, like I said, we, we put a submission in in June and never heard anything back.
But, but I understand that, but it, it, it's kind of, I, I hate to say this, I mean, it's kind of like everybody's out having a great time, oh yeah, come on over, come on, let's, you know, and everybody's like, yeah, and then it's like, oh, you wake up next morning and go, whoa, that's going to cost some money, what are we going to do? So, I guess, um, and with all due respect, everything in government is a process and takes time, and, and here we are. So, um, I personally believe that, you know, I think it would, $15,000 is quite a bit of money on, on the fly, even if it is in June, it is, you know, right there. But, I mean, what amount can you, I mean, because if we say no, you're, you're, you're in a bind, and we're talking next week.
Right. I'm sorry that I don't have the numbers with me, but I can get those numbers to you today from our treasurer. I just don't have them on my hand, on hand.
I would think that for Chris, the president, the main was, was the housing. Like I said, it's $9,911 to house. Uh, for 12 days.
Okay.
Nine people. And I believe the students are staying with, uh, host families to get that, that cultural feel.
And so, they're here for how many days?
12.
12 days. So, nine people are being housed, so it's like a thousand dollars a person. So, that's, that is literally less than a hundred dollars a night. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Counselors, go back to Councilmember Benevente, I, I guess, my question for you or for, or for Council or both, there is the city budget X for the sister-city program, which would also include places other than Saint of Old, if it comes to that. Is that something that your organization is, or I see the name of your organization is Saint of Old Friendship Alliance, uh, group? And so, are you interested in only Saint of Old, or would your, would your duties and tasks permit other things? Are you partitioning just for your group's in, initiative here?
No.
And Counsel, as you consider this, is this for this specific group or for the cause of building international and foreign relations? Cause what she spoke of, I had, um, as a member of the EDC board, kind of led Robert to look at international companies, which included one in South Korea, there was one in, uh, uh, parts of, uh, of Asia, of Africa, and there was, uh, some other places that aligned, they were cities close to military bases, large military bases that had strategic interests. And we've actually economically had a few of those companies that, to either come here or give interest for here. So, I know you've got a, a charter that probably dictates what you do. Is that what you're partitioning, or is this something that would be, uh, a part of a bigger program, or is your specific goals are aligned with Saint of Old specifically?
Well, we started as specifically aligned with Saint of Old, because that was the sister-city program, and it was basically not being promoted.
So it was pulled out of another group to promote it. I don't think that we would have a problem assisting culturally and educationally to expand. We specifically backed off on economic because that is not, we don't mind making partnerships, having people meet one another, but that's not our mission. So we don't legally and all other reasons, that's not, we're nonprofit not for that. But to promote cultural, cross-cultural visits and education, absolutely, that's why we're here.
Got it. All right, Councilmember Benes McLaughlin in here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the work that you're doing. I do think that it's a great idea to have teachers coming from Saint of Old to visit our city. But it does give me heartburn, the fact that we are using taxpayer dollars and we have other organizations that need funding. It's almost like they go through a bidding, you know? We have a board set up where they determine our economic development, you know, they determine on who are and by a scale on who's receiving what. So that just gives me heartburn, just you all coming requesting funding, which, I mean, I think that's great that you guys are doing that. But to just say, okay, yes, we're going to give you guys $15,000 where again, there's other organizations within our city that needs funding and they, like I said, have to go through a bidding situation. However, I am supportive if we're able to, to be able to provide transportation. Yeah, so that's where I'm at with that. And again, when myself and two other colleagues, when we went to Saint of Old, we went there for a different reason. You know, it was a different meaning behind it. We have some of our veterans that's buried there at the cemetery. So it was more like a memorial service of us going there. Although again, I support teachers coming here to tour our city. But again, it's giving me heartburn as far as our taxpayer dollars being utilized for that. And just like the mayor mentioned and Councilmember Benavente mentioned, I would love to see if we can, you know, in the future, decide on, you know, taking that out of our budget, appropriating money, if we agree that that's something that we're going to do so it can be consistent.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure, I think I may have asked this when it came up before us the last time. Very familiar with this, this program that we're doing back and forth. What my question is, and I was looking, and I don't see it in my cam here, what is the amount and does it change whenever we actually go to our sister city? What are their financial supports for Fayetteville when we make that trip? I think I may have asked that at the last meeting.
I believe they, Pam, didn't they cover our?
You're talking about Saint of Old?
Yes.
When you come, didn't they house you and feed you for that?
When the delegation went to Saint of Old, they paid for all of the, they paid for all of the hotel expenses and food expenses and the city paid for the travel.
And this was their city?
We had three council members.
Was this their city?
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
Say that again, please.
The city of Saint of Old paid the housing expenses for our council members.
Housing and gas expenses.
Yes, and transportation from the airport.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, was the question answered, Councilmember Hare?
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, so back to you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Ms. Benavente.
And I think that we'd already kind of done our tit for tat because we received their mayor and obviously took care of some things. So, you know, I think that that loop has been closed as far as the exchange between the city of Saint of Old and the city of Fayetteville. I think that we have to look back at the agenda and what we're asked to do today is to amend the budget. We're amending our budget today and we haven't really gotten a clear answer on how much they've raised exactly. And we're setting quite a precedent for how low that bar is for us to amend the budget for an organization that can show up and say, we need some dollar figure and we're not really going to ask for transportation, we're going to ask you guys to kind of come up with something to give us. This is highly irregular. I think that what we can do today is the part that I think we all agree on, we want more established parameters. But for us to break all this protocol and to start making suggestions about what we can and can't do for someone who hasn't necessarily asked for that specifically or given us all the data that we need, I've got a lot of other organizations that I'm going to let know that this is the precedent, that you can just throw something together and if we don't want to give it to you, we'll come up with something for you. And that's quite the bar to establish today when we don't have to do that. We can just do the part that we're comfortable with. And if we get another request, that makes sense because it asks for in-kind transportation, it asks for a dollar figure that matches what they know for sure they've raised, we can listen to that. But I'm not sure why we're bending over backwards to do something so highly irregular that we will not do and have never done for anyone else. But if we're prepared to start doing that, I promise you, I've got two or three folks that are going to show up before the end of the year asking the same exact way. And I question whether or not this council will bend over backwards like that.
All right, so did you have, no other discussion? Do you have any, Councilmember Davis, I'll see your light again? Yes, sir. All right, Councilman, then we need to make a decision.
I think, Mr. Manager, you said something similar to like us maybe creating a board and commission. Is that what you said earlier?
Yes, sir, that would be, specifically, I would recommend that the council allow the mayor to form a little ad hoc committee. But that's for the larger question. But the question in front of you today is the trip that's, when, is it two weeks?
Okay, well.
The eighteenth.
Ten days.
Whenever that discussion is happening, just, I think that that would be the best way moving forward and we not just have one board and commissions focused on just France or just one country. It needs to be international and we can fund it that way and then they can do what they need to do to bridge the gap with Sister City.
All right, so Council, do we have some action or, Councilwoman Benavente?
I move that we direct staff to develop this ad hoc recommendation through the mayor, Mayor Protem meetings if need be, however the city staff would like to do it. But that we create this direction or we authorize staff to move in a direction where we have an established international Fayetteville and international context committee.
Sister City, so to revise and give, come back to Council with an expanded Sister City program? Is that what you're saying? All right, so that is the motion and then we'll come back and address the specific thing if Council chooses. All right, is that a second to that consensus? All right, second by Councilmember Davis. Discussion of questions on the consensus, which is to work with staff to revive the Sister City program that will come back, work with the manager to come back with parameters of what a Sister City program and expanded program looks like. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, all right, look to you for action on that, y'all, if no other questions. All right, it's unanimous. All right, now, as it relates to this particular item, any action?
I have one.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we appropriate $10,000 to the Saint of Old Friendship Alliance Culture and Education Exchange for, can't think of the word now. Housing.
All right, the motion by Mayor Protem, is it seconded? All right, Council, any other action? I would ask, before I go to you, Councilwoman Benavente, if there's an opportunity for in-kind transportation. All right.
Mayor Colvin, I move that we make room on that Monday's meeting, perhaps over the next two, three days. Y'all can revise a letter to us requesting, maybe based on some of the conversation we had, something that we would be willing to do, in-kind transportation. I think, if we can make that a motion, that we receive that to be on the agenda on Monday.
That would be very helpful for transportation. It's a couple thousand dollars for a 15-passenger van, not including the gas.
Okay, all right. All right.
Excuse me, I have a question. Will we need a city employee for that van?
Yeah, I think it's our van, you'd have to do the logistics with them. I don't think we can give you the van. I think it'll be, come with a driver that, the manager will kind of get the details if council agrees. All right, we hope that helps. Thank you for that. Sorry that, you know, we just kind of had to work through some things, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, Council moving to. Yeah, they were going to resubmit, but is there, is there something that we need to do if they don't resub? I mean, the audit says to resubmit, but you're saying that council will consider it if it comes in quickly on Monday, correct? All right, so that, I think, everybody clear on that? For them to resubmit, how are we voting for them? Well, we haven't received the request yet. Yeah, so that's what they're saying, that we'll make that decision on Monday, okay. All right, 6.03, PWC discussion to authorize CEO, general manager to seek to rezone real property. Mr. Gault, how are you? Yes, sir.
Hello? My name's Richard Gault, I'm deputy general counsel for PWC. I was asked to come today to address any questions and give some context to a resolution that was sent over for consideration. I think it's your last meeting. PWC is seeking to rezone a small piece of property on, that is part of a larger parcel that's being developed for a solar farm. And as part of that replating, recombination of the property into one, the county's asking us to rezone this small piece of property. It's on Carver's, Carver's Falls Road, I believe, out by King's Grant. I guess the resolution was sent over without any context. I note the title of this is to resolution authorizing the PWC CEO to seek rezoning of real properties. I think it's more accurate to say seeking an affirmation of PWC's authority to rezone properties. What's really come up is in connection with this, the rezoning application was signed by PWC personnel. The county attorney, actually planning, asked that the mayor sign it. That's not been the case in the past. We believe PWC has the authority to manage properties. If, under the charter, we only seek authority from the city council with respect to sales, leases and conveyances, other conveyances under section 6A9 of the charter. Under various subsections of 6A7 of the charter, PWC manages its utility properties. And that includes ministerial duties of signing rezoning applications. This is a new request from the county. I spoke to county attorney, I believe his position was that he wanted to paper the file a little bit better. We think it's consistent with what we've done in the past. It's my understanding that we've never sought authority or otherwise asked permission for rezoning of properties, not with saying they're held in the name of the city of Fayetteville for utility purposes. So we think the charter supports it. I'm sorry that there wasn't more context when it was sent over, but that's where we are and I'm happy to answer more specific questions about how this has happened in the past and where this original request came from.
All right, do have a couple of questions. I have, I have a question and I have to go to Councilmember Hare and Thompson. So if it's your position that the charter already gives you the authority to do it, why has the request been made?
Well, that was our question to the county. You know, again, I've only been there for two years, so I'm relying on historical knowledge. I did a search of all of the resolutions we can find and picked the brains of the people that have been there 30 years. It's my understanding we've never asked for authority. I don't know where this has come from. We did a broad request so that we didn't have to keep coming back and asking for the same thing. But I understand that Mr. Moorfield's just trying to paper his file. If you go back to when the charter was redone, 2017?
Yeah, 15.
15. At that time, I, at least from the files that I've reviewed since our last general counsel left, there was no question about that authority. In fact, we provided county attorney with a resolution at the very same time that charter was done roughly, in order to avoid having the CEO of PWC sign all the time. There was a, there was a resolution, a PWC resolution authorizing various department heads to sign. Again, it's a ministerial action to sign an application for a rezoning request. But for whatever reason, they're looking to paper their files a little bit. So again, that's why I go back to, it's not so much requesting authority, we believe we have the authority. We believe it was granted to us in the charter. And as you know, the charter is pretty short, it's pretty, it's pretty clear on its face, I believe. So it's more of an affirmation for the purposes of the county so that they're comfortable not relying just on our internal PWC resolution as to the authority of managers, if you will.
And then if this is a one specific item request, I understand the request that came before us was a broader authorization that would not only do it for this one particular item, but going forward, that there would be no need for PWC because they do bring land to us to rezone or to do certain actions, correct? You agree with that? I know we've done some action before with PWC right of ways or disposal of land or something like that, so that's not uncommon.
Again, under 6A9, we have to seek authority from.
City.
From the city with respect to sales, leases, not all leases over a year, and other conveyances. Again, this is a ministerial action. Under 6A7, we have clear authority to manage the properties, utility properties. And this is one of our utility properties.
So what you're saying is your position is that this constitute, the management of it is changing the zoning of it? That would all be one and the same?
It's my position that is not a sale, lease or conveyance, which is what the clear language of 6A9 says, that we come before the council for sales.
Rephrase that. So I got what you're saying on your, that's your interpretation of it, so that we hadn't tested that anything. So what I'm saying is, instead of this being a one-time authorization, you're asking for a broader authorization that would not only apply to this, but going forward, period.
Again, my first sentence, my first statement was that it's probably a misnomer to say we're asking for authority. We already have the authority, we believe. It's more of an affirmation for the purposes of the county. Now, if I had come to you and asked you for authority with respect, authority or affirmation with respect to Carver Hills Falls, as you probably know, we're doing several projects. I don't know that they'll involve rezoning, but it seemed not helpful to you or to us to come back each time and ask for affirmation, not authority, but affirmation that we have authority, but rather to ask.
Well, I think in this case, if the county is telling you to do it, you do need our participation, whether you call it affirmation, authority, you need us to do something for you to do something, right?
No, I don't know if I agree with that. But I got that lawyer thing.
All right, I'll move on.
But as a, no, as a practical matter, we've done this for as long as we've known. And we've, I don't, I don't know if anybody on the council, again, I've only been there two years, but I did look into it. I don't know that we've ever asked for, have you ever signed an application for rezoning for PWC property?
I don't remember it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not aware that we've ever asked or have ever had it suggested that the city had the authority with respect to beyond the sale, lease and other conveyance.
Got you. All right, thank you, Ms. Gault. Councilwoman Hare and Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, sir, for coming. I guess I misunderstood this from years back of having these kind of discussions. And then when I saw the plure in this on properties, it made me think the same thing that the mayor just stated, that it's all property. So for clarification, help me, even if you just said it. Are you saying that whenever PWC is in need of property and they want to rezone that property, you're saying that up under 6A dot one, or that they have the authorization within the charter, their charter, to go and do just that?
Well, just to be clear, not under 6A1, under 6A7. Well, just to be clear, not under 6A1, under 6A7. That we have clear authority to manage property used for utility purposes.
Okay, now, ca- hold it right there a minute. What's throwing me off, because I heard when you stated that before, you said to manage. And I understand what manage is in, in managing properties myself. And from my understanding and looking at your charter, that managing and having authority just to go forward on a piece of property for rezoning, uh, within the city of Fayetteville city limits without going before, uh, making any notification to the council and I assume any notification to the, the, uh, PWC commission is what you're saying that PWC has the authority to do now, regardless of how it ended up on our agenda?
I think the language in 6A7 that, uh, the commission is hereby fully authorized and empowered to make all necessary contracts in the management of utilities pertaining to such property under its management and control. And also, um, there's actually two. And under four, 6A74, the commission shall have charge and control over and shall supervise construction, repairing, alteration, enlargement of the electric plant, waterworks plant, sewage...
Right.
Any other utility in the life, which is exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, and I understand that. I, I'm not going against that part that you're saying. What I'm having the difficulty in understanding, okay, let's just say this. Let's just say this where we are now, we're just using this for an analogy. And, uh, PWC, uh, wants this property, they see it for whatever reason, it, it, it works for them for whatever it is, for whatever it is that they're trying to do. Are you saying then up under the charter that you just read that PWC would have, uh, the authority to go and do whatever it needs to do in rezoning that property, uh, without notifying the city of Fayetteville? Cause they have the authority to do that? Is that what you're saying?
No, but I would take issue how you, um, it would, number one, it would depend on whether it comes under management of utility and the furtherance of what we're allowed to do in management of, of utility. Um, notifying or not notifying the council is a different que, uh, is a different question, one that I didn't know was in front of us.
Ms. Gault, can, can you speak into mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it is if you were coming to ask for rezoning.
Well, you, you said notice. If you're asking for notice, no, I, I don't necessarily think that would be unreasonable request that we notify the council if we're rezoning. But so long as it was in, within the, uh, the spirit of what we're allowed to do, I, I don't think we would have to ask, uh, city council authority. So you sort of asked two questions there at once in my mind. I, I wanted to be clear that, uh, I, I don't, i- i- if your position was that you should get notice, I don't know that I disagree with that. If your position was that we don't have the authority to do without approval, I would respectfully disagree with that. So long it was within the parameters of what we're permitted to do, that it was utility property, electric property, uh, you know, basically, uh, utility facilities under the management and control of PWC.
Yeah, well, I just see, I, I kind of understand it. I, I, I just don't like that, that understanding, but Mayor, I'll stand down on my, uh, questions and...
I think you had some good ones, but we got a couple of more. This has become an interesting topic, Councilmember Thompson and Hondros.
Uh, Mayor.
Oh, you still got, okay.
I was just wanting to just kind of help give a little bit, a different picture. Um, right there at the, uh, at areas in my district, the corner of Brookfield and Yakkin. Now, this is two different matters, but we had to work them to get that right too. Where the gas company went in and built this large monstrosity and whatever that thing is, gas, you know, and because they said that they had the authority to be able to go forward. Uh, and, and it's just, it, it's, it's hard for me to understand, uh, and I'm, I don't know where we're gonna get it from, maybe we'll get it from our attorney, that, uh, that PWC has that authority, uh, to do what you're requesting on the agenda item that what came before us last, last week. So that's, that's where I stand still.
By way of clarification, um, that is not what we're asking. Rezoning is different than to go in and build a whole giant facility as you described. We couldn't do that because just the nature of the contracts, the size of them, the bids, to do something like that, we would be back in front of the city council. Again, I, I just wanna, I wanna zero down that this is an isolated and in my mind, a, uh, very narrow request. This has to do with rezoning and in, in this particular instance, you can't, don't quote me on the amount of property, cause I didn't look at it. But we're talking about, uh, several parcels, a very minor part of which is not zoned as are the others. Meaning it's not zoned, uh, for the solar farm. In connection with a recombination of all of these into one, um, the county's requiring us to, to have it rezoned, that came down to a very simple zoning application, which was signed by head of our engineering and they wanted to come here. So they've sort of opened a can of worms here that's never been opened, that I don't think was ever in dispute between PWC and the council, as long as that, that was my understanding. It's never been in dispute. And, uh, again, perhaps, uh, a more narrow, specific affirmation request would have been better. But, um, quite frankly, I think we were just trying to avoid, uh, having to do this over and over again and to satisfy Mr. Moorefield's desire to have, uh, something papered in his file.
I appreciate your explanation, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think what is in dispute is that the fact that you brought a item that was broad for everything that you wanted to rezone on a consent item. So my first question would be is if this charter was changed in 2015, what was the purpose of it being changed then? The reason why it wasn't really brought to my attention was I was under the impression it was one item until we all had to scramble and say, no, this is for all pieces of property. So why is it necessary, even though you say it was in the charter in 2015, that it need to be this way now?
Well...
Even, and, 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 and some people tell me we always have to do our checks and balances. Why did it go in consent and not as an agenda item?
Okay, a couple of things here. As, as to why the charter was changed in 2015, that's a huge question. I'll defer to Mayor on that.
It was a dispute about authority.
I don't think we have enough time to go down that road. Well, there, there you go. So that, that's a big question. Um, as for, again, I, I just want to emphasize, this is a very narrow, this is a very narrow question that we're asking. It's not, uh, to, to acquire property, uh, it's not to sell, sell, lease or convey, it's just to rezone.
Gotcha.
Um, why was it on a consent item? I, I can't tell you that. I understand that, uh, again, I, I, in my perspective, it's an affirmation of our authority. It's not grant, a grant of authority.
I understand.
So I, my guess is it comes out of other powers that be at PWC, how it makes it, its way to your agenda and whether it's on a consent or not. I can't speak to that. I don't know how, how it's decided here to go on a consent agenda or otherwise.
Mr. Mayor, let me just ask one more question.
Yeah.
Has PWC ever in the past five years sent us an item that need to be rezoned?
Talking to me?
And staff.
Where's Doug at?
Doug?
Well, I know we've got some staff members that know the answer to that. I mean, they sent us a lot of stuff that they just need us to do it as a formality.
Correct, so...
And, and I think that, I don't know what it costs Mr. Gault to come over here today, uh, even though he's in house, but I think a rezoning could have already taken place and then we, we'd be down the road.
My, my, the point, the point I'm trying to make, Mr. Mayor, if it was a single item, it wouldn't have been a problem being on consent.
Right.
But when you make this a broad item for every piece of property you want to rezone, it brings the question.
The county's rezoning, just to be clear.
I understand.
Um, I understand. Uh, uh, we are going to endeavor to have, uh, better communication with, with city attorney in the future on these matters. Uh, again, in, in our mind, it was an affirmation, a ministerial item, uh, any construction or anything, uh, significant. In fact, you, I believe you have voted on, uh, some of the, uh, bid, bids we've had, uh, and affirmed, uh, the construction. I don't know whether...
Not rezoning though, those are just bids, not rezoning.
But my point is with respect to councilman's, uh, concerns about PWC running off and building all sorts of stuff on its own, on, in reliance on 6A7, I, I don't think that's, I, I don't think we'd have the authority to do that at all. Um, it, it, this is merely to put in a rezoning application. Um, and it was, uh, again, inartfully conveyed, the context, but, um, and whether, but again, I can't speak to the consent.
I, I understand that, but let me just clarify one thing. And you keep saying it over and over and over again. If it's in the charter and it's been in the charter since 2015, then why did you bring it to us in the first place?
Because Mr. Moorefield is forcing us to. We, our rezoning is being held up. Um, the machinations of building this solar farm are, uh, very complicated. Contractors on time, things moving forward, tax credits expiring. We have potentially a new administration that may not look favorably on the tax credits on which we'll be relying to build these solar farms. Uh, time is of the essence and the delay in, uh, trying to get this to move forward in a timely manner, uh, it, it was a lot of pressure on us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I agree with Mr. Gault that the, uh, I wish this would have came to us with more context, so we're in agreement there. Um, Mr. Gault and/or Attorney Pulliam, correct me if I'm wrong. So as we know, the charter supersedes everything and spells out what authorities PWC has, correct? So they already have the authority, which is my understanding, why Mr. Gault's using the word. This is more of an affirmation of the authority. So this isn't for them to rezone the property. If it's in the city or in the county, the city or the county planning commissioner, zoning commission still has to approve that. This is just to submit the application for rezoning.
Correct.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, I, I'm okay with this. It was just, uh, we should have had more backup.
I understand.
Context.
And, uh, I, I believe our general counsel had a, a conversation with, uh, city attorney about, uh, making a better system going forward, be it consent items or otherwise.
So, Ms. Gault, uh, just one more question from, from my clarification. So basically, if your position is that management of these properties covers these kind of things and we vote, uh, wouldn't that ratify your belief and just make that the way that it is? So our interpretation would be your interpretation, even if right now we're not necessarily agreeing on it? So my question is, wouldn't it be easier for us just to rezone this piece and let's move on? Uh, or, or what is the, what is the longer-term goal, uh, from your perspective?
Longer-term goal is to get it on the, the agenda with the county so that they'll approve the rezoning, so that, uh, we can record our plat, we can satisfy all the other obligations in connection with, uh, beginning construction.
So council, are y'all amenable to, uh, agreeing to put this rezoning on there without speaking to the rest of the interpretation about that nasty authority word?
The 2015 charter says that...
That's the way it is and we can't change the charter.
That's his interpretation of that piece, but we're not in dispute. So, but right now, he said his goal is to get that one piece rezoned.
Why motion re- rezone that one piece so they can get the solar plant built?
I'll second that.
Oh, oh, Councilmember Banks, you had something? Oh.
I'm sorry. Oh, no, it's okay.
All right, so this is, this is motion by Councilmember Thompson and seconded by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin to rezone that so that we won't hold you up, uh, in, in this. Any questions on that, guys?
May I ask clarification?
Yeah.
So are, are you asking us to, uh, submit a new resolution specific to this particular project authority to have our CEO or his delegate, uh, sign a rezoning application for this specific property? If that's what you're doing, I'm happy to draft that resolution and then we can have further discussions, uh...
Will this specific resolution cover the rezoning on the...
It, it will, but it's very broad. If you sign the one we sent over, we're gonna have authority to sign on all properties. And I, I'm understanding Mayor Colvin is saying something else. Am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm speaking specifically to the example that we've been discussing today. And I think that was where their motion was headed, that they would authorize the execution of that on a one-time basis for this particular item, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, all right, Councilmember Hondros, you have a question?
I'm not in disagreement with that totally, but if that's the case, so we routinely get on consent on, on the council, uh, meetings, when they're purchasing large contracts over a certain amount, they come to us on consent. Instead of that, instead of PWC having to submit a resolution every time they want to submit a rezoning application in the future, if we're only gonna approve this one today, then I would want staff to give us, uh, outline of the charter so we can decide if we need to do a broad resolution or not. Because if, if, and I hear what you're saying as far as that's the one attorneys, um, which is, happens to be a PWC attorneys, um, uh, their understanding or their belief that the charter says, well, we need some resolution if that's what the charter says or not. Because if they already had that authority, why are we gonna make them submit a resolution every time they want to rezone something? So maybe council needs to look at the charter for ourselves and see what it says and what it doesn't say.
Well, I think that's a separate discussion.
Well, that's my point.
Right now, they've got a timeline that they're trying to accomplish something with the county.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I'm supportive of approving the one and then having a larger discussion on the other.
Well, you may have to just do it as a separate action if that's something you want to do. But, uh, unless they're gonna amend it to that, is that, are y'all changing it to...
No, we could do two separate motions.
All right, all right, council, look to you for action on, on this. Questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think you need to reans...
Re-stated, it's Councilmember Thompson's motion, so I'll let him...
Yeah, I think you need, you need to restate.
Can you restate?
Make sure that Mr. Gault...
I make a motion that Mr. Gault will come back with a resolution to rezone this one property pertaining to the, uh, power plant that they need from the county.
Okay, all right. Everybody clear?
Whenever, whenever he can get it back to us, we can get it approved. When he gets it back to us, hopefully we can put it on a consent agenda for the 14th.
Soon as possible, I guess, huh? Councilmember in there?
Oh, he's crystal clear.
I'm understanding that I'm gonna submit a new resolution, uh, authorizing or affirming the authority of, uh, our CEO or his delegate to sign a rezoning application with respect to this one piece of property. And, uh, should you choose to take up the next one, we'll, we'll revisit a, uh, broader resolution.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that, is that, that's why I'm...
Yes, sir, I mean, you, you was looking a little positive there, so...
Jennifer, can you restart the votes?
I'm, I'm, I'm good.
All right, council, y'all ready? All right. Who we missing? All right, unanimous. Ms. Gault, thank you, sir.
I just want to say PWC is very appreciative of how closely we work with the, the council.
And we are too. This has been the best it's been in a while.
And we're sorry if we've, uh, added to any confusion and wasted some of your time.
No, it wasn't.
I like to think it wasn't a waste.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't. It was, it was good information.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am. I don't want to go down that road. I don't know what that means, but, okay. All right, so moving to 6.04, uh, discussion on proposal dates. Ms. McGill, how you doing? Does me, you know, Mr. Chris used to get all upset when you send 200 calendar invites at one time.
It's part of my job. But I wish everybody wouldn't hit reply, because then I get 600 emails back telling me that you're gonna come to the meetings. So this item, Mayor and council, is basically just housekeeping. And there had been some discussion in a committee meeting about changing the time of council meetings start time. So we've provided you a draft calendar and it's up for discussion what you want to do with it. Thank you.
All right, council, any questions or comments?
I do. Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion that we accept the calendar? I'm sorry, I didn't see anybody go. Oh.
I'm sorry.
It was-
Councilmember Honduras and Benavente.
Oh, sorry.
So, Madam Clerk, you mentioned that there was some revisions to the council member meetings?
No, sir. That was just a discussion that came up in a committee meeting.
Okay. So my question to this calendar, proposed calendar, down here, there's a, I guess that's a magenta, I'm not great with colors, color for strategic planning retreat, but there's no date for strategic planning.
That's still to be determined.
I think it would be prudent to determine that sooner than later. And also, every year, or at least the last couple of years I've been on council, we talk about, or there's discussion about beginning the budget discussions sooner. And then here we are, it's the third, Thursday in May before the first budget work session, unless I'm missing one. What can we do to get strategic planning on in January or February and start budget in March or April, instead of wait until May?
Be a manager thing.
The strategic planning session usually is the beginning of the budget process. Sometime this fall or early January, I'm not sure yet which, we are also planning to bring you the CIP-TIP so that you can add that, and it builds, the budget builds itself. But we can start the budget process, and those are just the work sessions. There is a statutory required date that we have to provide the budget to you, and I can't remember right now when that is. Is it first of June? And so we are starting in May. But if you'd like to advance that earlier to sometime in April, we can do that as well. It's, this council's calendar, and you tell us when you would like it, and if we will bring you the elements of the budget as they are ready, if it's not fully ready, this earliest February, March, it just depends what council's appetite is.
All right.
But we don't have a date yet for the strategic planning session, but we will work to get that.
Councilmember Benavente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But it would definitely be in January.
Yes, sir. That will, would be the guiding principle we would have. And I think that what we did before was we did two half-days that seemed to work very well for folks. And with the second day culminating in you developing your goals for the upcoming year, which we built the budget around.
So despite Councilmember Honduras's concern about not starting soon enough, technically, we start in January. I move that we approve the recommendations by the city clerk.
All right. Councilmember Davis, you had a question? All right. Most of my, since this motion by Councilmember Benavente seconded by Davis, discussion on that? You say yes?
So a couple of dates, or maybe deliverables. So we were supposed to have, isn't there an audit due in October? Are we on pace to meet that audit date? So we're not late for a third year in a row? That, and then also, I think we had asked for, I specifically asked for a sales tax distribution deficit for fiscal year '24. I think that was supposed to come end of September. So I'd like to know if those two dates are tracking.
Not, don't have recall on the, on the second one at the moment. We'll get you some information about that. We are scheduled to bring you the first quarter financials in either end of this month or end of this month, last minute of this month. First quarter of this fiscal year would have ended at September. And so we are on track to bring you that, once we close out the books sometime later this month in October. And yes, the audit will be on time.
All right, council, any other questions? All right. Look to you for action on this. And it is always able to be amended if we're missing something, right? If there's a conference or something, we, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. 6.05, review of residential traffic management.
It's everyone's favorite topic.
It is.
I'm doing well.
Councilmember Harris' favorite topic. These speed bumps.
How do I get this up on the screen? Yeah, I'm on presentation mode up here on the podium. Is there a magic word? Open sesame? Didn't work. Yay. We did it. All right. So thank you all for being here. My name is Brian McGill. I'm the interim Assistant Public Services Director of Traffic Services. Today, we're going to be talking about the Residential Traffic Management Program. I know it's getting a little bit late in the afternoon, so I'll try and keep this presentation very brief and to the point. So earlier this year, we presented an administrative report. The administrative report went over the RTMP. And the RTMP is essentially the Residential Traffic Management Program. I'm going to be using a lot of acronyms here. RTMP is going to be the main one. Just a brief history of the RTMP, though. Back in 2019, there were some revisions to the RTMP. Late 2023, we came here and presented not only an administrative report, but also a presentation. And that was about traffic calming measures. That lasted about 40 minutes long, if you guys remember that long, very long presentation. And then in the middle of this year, we presented an administrative report. The administrative report, in the middle of this year, was responses to the comments made during the presentation. That's what this presentation is about. It is presenting essentially the responses to the questions that came from there. But it's also to discuss the RTMP as a whole, and also some of the developments that are going on surrounding the RTMP. One of the major developments going on with the RTMP right now is called Safe Streets and Roadways for All. The shorter term for it is SS4A. But essentially, it is a federal grant that is providing us a lot of money to study federal, or not federal, fatal and severe fatal, blah, fatal and severe crashes across the city. One of the things that makes FAL unique with our SS4A is we are requiring the consultant to do a peer review with other municipalities and other towns, and also look at best industry practices, and look at what they're doing and how we can implement what they're doing into our RTMP. We're also asking them to look at our code of ordinances and the UDO to look at ways to prioritize safety, to improve traffic safety for vehicles and pedestrians. This essentially is going to be completed at the summer or fall of 2025, next year. And beginning with the end in mind here, we are going to, there's a handful of slides after this, but I want to begin with the end in mind here. The RTMP, we're recommending that any revisions that are being proposed for it, wait until SS4A comes back with recommendations. And this is because the consultant is going to be a lot more thorough than what staff can present. This is because of some of the other concerns that we're going to be bringing up during this presentation that are going to be in response to some of the questions that were asked. One of the things that we are potentially looking at in the meantime, though, is going to be speed cushions. And speed cushions is something that is a concern with regards to emergency response times, whenever we're talking about speed humps. And that is something that we're going to be talking about with the fire department down the road, about how we can essentially alleviate some of the concerns on that front. And for those that can see the picture pretty well, a speed cushion is essentially a speed hump with slots or valleys cut into the middle of them that are wide enough for a fire apparatus or fire engine to travel through it at speed, but it's not wide enough for a car or a pickup truck or a minivan to do the same. They can get one side of their vehicle to stay flat, but the other side is going to come up on the hump. Now, in regards to some of the questions that were provided at the presentation last time, the first one, the one that was at the forefront, was essentially the, the question for, blah. It was asked for more options besides speed bumps and humps. The main concern that we have with speed bumps and humps is a challenge with funding for the RTMP program, a challenge with liability, complexity, and time. Now, whenever I say funding, there's going to be a slide later in this presentation that's going to look at the funding that was there last fiscal year, this fiscal year, and is also going to show you what the average cost for a speed hump is. A speed hump is the most efficient and effective way to reduce speeds. There are more effective ways, blah, sorry, I misspoke. There are more. Give me one second. It's a little nerve-wracking up here.
They ain't bothering you, are they?
No. No, I know it's a, I know it's a very, yeah. I know everyone is eyes, all eyes on me on this one. Speed humps are one of the most cost-effective ways to reduce speeds. There are other traffic calming measures out there. As you guys know from the 40-minute-long presentation, the other ones out there, they might not have the same concerns that you have with speed humps. However, they can cost a lot more, or they don't reduce speed as effectively. Now, one of the reasons that I bring up the liability concerns is one of those things that costs a lot more, might not reduce speed as effectively, is something like a roundabout. A roundabout can cost a lot of money. You stay small with a traffic circle inside of a neighborhood, $30,000, $50,000. You put it out there in the middle of a main road, you're talking about half a million dollars. And a roundabout isn't something that can be just cookie cutter, you know, one size fits all. It has to be custom fit. Whenever you have it where city staff are designing it, the city is now going to bring, bring on liability. Because if people start crashing into the roundabout, then it opens up the city to say, oh, the city designed the roundabout incorrectly. Speed humps, they are very cookie cutter right now. Some of the other traffic calming measures that are out there, they are unique, custom fit, custom design. And that's why exploring those options can lead into other liabilities. As you add more traffic calming measures into the RTMP, then it can also increase the complexity of the RTMP process. And I'll also go through a summary of what the speed hump request process looks like. But as more options are provided, it's going to take longer for staff to go through the entire process. Right now, a little peek behind the curtain, the RTMP process has one, one and a half people in the city effectively running that program full-time. And we're going to get into the numbers here in a second, but I just want to mention that as you add more to the RTMP, it's going to increase complexity and time, and increase the funding, the funding impact and the funding requirements that are placed on it. Now, one of the other concerns that was brought up in the last presentation was can we use stop signs to essentially try and reduce some of the speeds on the main roads and neighborhoods? The city follows the MUTCD. The MUTCD, lovely acronym, stands for Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's the reason that a stop sign here looks like a stop sign in Alaska, in Texas, in Maine. Same size, same red, same size letters, same placement. It is a federal guideline. It's a federal reference manual essentially for how we place it out in the field. And it says in that federal reference that yield and stop signs shall not be used for speed control. So whenever a reference, reference manual is saying what we can and cannot do with signs, we typically stick with that. It was also asked, can bond, can bond funds be used for traffic calming measures? The answer is yes. And then it was also asked what information was provided in the presentation, as well as what is the source for the RTMP. The presentation and the administrative report that provided all those traffic calming measures, that was information that was gathered on a national stage. It came from FHWA and the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The RTMP, what the city uses to provide speed humps for citizens, that is based on regional information from peer-to-peer, or peer review across the state of North Carolina. One of the other questions asked was how do new developers decide where to put traffic controls and calming measures? Developers, whenever they're placing houses and subdivisions out there, they're typically working with architects, engineers, designers, site planners, people that essentially have a lot of industry knowledge. And with that industry knowledge, they have a general understanding of how the roads are typically designed. They're typically working with other traffic engineers or transportation engineers, or they're working with site developers. Outside of that, though, the city does have a unified development ordinance, or UDO, which has requirements regarding placement of signs and following the MUTCD, and also placement of traffic calming measures, depending on the requirements. Specifically, one of those requirements, if there's a linear street in a new development that is 800 feet or more long, then a traffic calming measure is required. Staff do review new developments that do come in. They come in through the technical review committee. Whenever we're reviewing it, if we see something wrong, then we say one of two things. We either say, hey, we see a problem here, we have a concern, we want you to address it, come back with your proposed suggestion on how to address it. Or we say, hey, the UDO says you're required to do this, so you're required to do this. It was also asked for more information on the RTMP. And with that, the agenda that you guys have with you has not only the RTMP, but also has something new that we put together just for this administrative report and the presentation. Some of you may have seen this before. Draft workflow summary sheet. It basically is a speed hump request. This is still draft. We're still working on this. This hasn't been released yet because we haven't had any branding applied to it. We haven't figured out if there's any roadblocks or bugs or stumbling blocks or anything of that nature. But it's essentially a summary of what the RTMP says for speed humps. As to the information on the RTMP, the RTMP is a complaint-driven, data-driven process. Everything we do is about data, and it's about best practices. It requires a complaint for us to go out there and place a speed hump, because we're relying on the data to determine where speed humps are placed. We're not placing them just because we feel like it's being a good place to place them. Typically, we, typically, we receive 80 or so annual requests. And on the left of the screen there, you can see kind of road requirements. Those are what we consider the thresholds. Volume, length, speed. The road has to meet certain volumes and lengths and speeds for a speed hump to be requested for that road. If you give me one second. And with, with this presentation kind of being focused on speed humps, I also have the multi-way stop information up there as well. But I'll keep the focus on speed humps. The other main component, though, is community support. And community support is necessary and required for speed humps. Because without community support, then speed hump installation essentially is going to fall flat on its face. And there are additional slides after this that we're going to talk about, about community support. Now, for some reason, a road is requested to have speed humps installed on it, but it does not meet the RTMP thresholds. There are ways for citizens to go about pursuing a non-compliant installation. It has been successful. I've seen HOAs, community watches, groups, I've seen them essentially pay out of pocket to have the city install speed humps on the request. I've also seen citizens put together a petition and petition city council, for city council to direct staff to install speed humps out in the field. I've seen both of them be successful. I'll say the second one. I can give you the exact, specific example. You might remember this. Citizens can petition city council to direct staff to install speed humps. The example is Orange Street. It happened from, it happened back in, I think, either 2, I think, 2003 or 2013.
Because if they get a certain percentage of signatures, then.
Yeah. Yeah. But it's, it's in the RTMP. It's, it's one of the three ways. All right. So just real quick, this is assuming that a road does qualify. I'm just going to jump through these processes real quick. But essentially, somebody in an HOA, community watch, they reach out to the city and they say, hey, I want a speed hump on this road. The city, you look at the road and they say, it meets the length, it meets the speeds, we'll go out there and we'll measure it. If you guys have ever seen the black tubes across the road, that is what we're doing by measuring the speeds and the volumes and things of that nature. After we perform a speed study, we reach back out to the person. We say, hey, there's enough volume out there. The vehicles are traveling fast enough. And after we look at it and we say, if we put a speed hump here, then it's going to affect so many houses around the area, make sure that you get their signature signed off on. And the contact person that reached out initially, it's now on them to go out and collect all the signatures. the signatures. With that, once they do, then the city goes out and they install speed humps. Historically, these are the numbers. Right now, historically, we receive about 80 or so. Last year, we received a hair under 80. I can think of three reasons why. The first one is citizens might not be aware that this program exists. The second reason is those that have already qualified for a speed hump are going through the petition process right now, so they're not going to request further additional studies. Or the third one, people have requested studies previously in the past. They found that their numbers were so low that they didn't bother submitting it for additional times. So if they submitted it in 20... Or 2021 or 2022, they might have submitted it in 2024. For reference, that's a little over 380 dots of all the speed studies that we have on file right now. And of those, 61 speed studies qualify for a speed hump. Of those 61, and before I move to the next slide, I will point out here, the box on the left, that 1,000 to 3,000, that's how much traffic needs to travel on a residential road for it to qualify for a speed hump. That number at the bottom, where it says 32, that's a different color than everything else, that's the speed limit, not the speed, that's the... How much 85% of the traffic on average needs to be traveling. But of those 61 studies, that led to a handful of them going forward to get speed humps actually installed. However, a handful of them still have open petitions, and I want to talk about petitions here in a second. Whenever this presentation was being put together, we were doing four studies out in the South Gate area. But petitions themselves, they require one of two ways of being signed. The first one is a physical signature, somebody going door-to-door in the affected area, knocking on doors, saying, "Please sign this. We want to put speed humps out here." The reason that we ask citizens to do this and have a contact person do this is because we don't have enough staff to go into every neighborhood and every person for every request to do this ourselves. We don't have the time or the manpower to do this ourselves. We do, however, host the online petitions on the Traffic Services website. Right now, there are 34 open petitions for speed humps... All right, let me phrase this. There are open petitions for speed humps on 34 different roads in the city. 34. So of those 61 speed studies that qualified for speed humps, 34 of them were now on the citizen to reach out, and it's just, it's staying open. The oldest petition is back from September 2021. That's on Shilton Drive and also Tyree Drive. So just a frame of reference. Now, the RTMP budget, and I want to caveat what you're seeing on the screen here. The average speed hump right now is about $3,300. The cost can increase depending on if the road gets wider. Last year, our fiscal year 24 budget was $75,000. This year, for the RTMP, it's $10,000. Whenever the budget was being addressed for all departments and all divisions, it was applied across all of them. Nothing was essentially protected from the cuts that were being impacted. If the RTMP reduces its expense, all those $10,000 from installing speed humps, then we are going to be looking at doing budget requisitions from other sources to continue funding additional speed hump installation for this fiscal year. But right now, our starting fund that we have is $10,000. The reduction that we see here was applied also for our operating budget, our operating budget inside of Traffic Services, our Contract Services. RTMP was not targeted out, but it was affected, as all departments and divisions were. That said, something I do want to point out here again, that I pointed out in the beginning, is speed cushions, because this has been a concern from citizens and councils about emergency response time. Speed cushions are essentially a speed hump that has channels, grooves, slots, however you want to call it, cut out so that a fire engine, a fire apparatus can run at speed over the speed hump as long as they're aligned correctly and not have to slow down. The flat part is wide enough, because fire engines are wider than your typical car. For a car to do this, they might get one of their wheels up in the right spot, but then the other one's just going to go over a hump. We are going to be talking with other municipalities about how they're implementing it, specifically Raleigh and Charlotte, but we're also going to be coordinating with our fire department about where this might be best applicable, and we're going to be looking at what locations have qualified for speed humps and pursue installing them as a test location. And on that, I'm coming towards the conclusion of this. All that to say, Safe Streets for All is a large, large federal grant study. That study is going to bring with it suggestions, revisions, goals for our RTMP. They're going to come back and say, "This is what other municipalities are doing. These are what the best practices are doing. This is how you can keep your RTMP a data-driven process based on numbers. Here is how you can keep this following engineering standards. This is how you can keep it fair and balanced." It is our recommendation to postpone revising any... To postpone making any revisions to the RTMP until SS4A can come back with revisions. That is going to be towards the end of summer or the beginning of fall of next year, and in the meantime, we're going to be looking at coordinating with the fire department at possible locations for pilot speed cushion demonstrations. And with that, I will be opening it up for questions.
All right. Do you have a few? Councilmember Hare, Benevente, and Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. And you're probably going to get a lot of the same, same questions here. This is wild here. For one thing, to wait on doing a revision, I kind of have a little issue with that, because with me, one of the biggest complaints and concerns, as you know, that I have, is speeding in neighborhoods. And we have a lot of neighborhoods throughout the city that even have cut-through areas that are speeding, so they're not always just the residents that live in the neighborhood, but because it's a cut-through from a major thoroughfare to another thoroughfare, folks are speeding through. I don't have a problem with the speed hump, with the speed cushions, as long as we can do what we can do to help slow down our drivers. One thing that I would be asking to amend, I don't know if we can do it today, but I would love to move forward, that we amend, is that, and I've told you this before, that this $15,000 appropriation for that area, just like, even though it's a bit different, just like the community signs, is just not enough for money, especially if you're looking at anywhere from 3,000 and up for a particular speeds, a speed hump. One of the... In my district, as my colleagues too, but especially in my district, mainly my neighborhoods are older neighborhoods, so they don't always get the advantage that you stated on how contractors can sometimes help produce or put in speed humps. So it's those older neighborhoods that are really, really suffering, and I would want us to do what we can to move forward in putting even more speed humps in. And I would love to go up, I know this may seem a little outrageous, but anywhere between 50, maybe to $75,000 appropriation for speed humps. I would also like for our mayor to consider letting us relook and putting forward another ad hoc committee that we had once before, the members that were with me before, they have all... They're not longer on council, so that we can make sure that the neighborhoods can do a little bit better in meeting the qualifications for speed humps. If you have the speed volume so high, if you have the count so high, it's going to be very difficult for some of the communities to ever meet the objectives, because the counts and the speed, the volume, is so, so, so high. The three-way stop signs, you say that doesn't help, and I know that I was the member that brought that forward, and it was instituted in the Green Valley neighborhood and a couple of other neighborhoods. We have found out that changing a one-way stop to a three-way stop, that pilot program has worked, or it has at least worked in the neighborhood that I pushed for at that time, which was Green Valley. So it may not be a trystic thing as far as this, you know, this... You know, this study speaks of, but it has helped. And right now, as we speak about a whole lot of things, we need every tool in the toolbox that can slow down these cars and speeders, not so much the cars, but the drivers, from flying through the neighborhood. So I don't know if this is the time or not, but I would like for us to consider appropriating at least $50,000. But if I... If there's some support here for us to go up to $75,000, I'm all for it. But most definitely, the 15,000 doesn't work. It can be gone in one or two neighborhoods. And before I ask for that consensus, my question here is, what happened to those rubber thoughts that were told to me years ago? It's a rubber-type speed hump that went across the road. I was even told that that rubber was cheaper than the asphalt. That's one... That's my question.
So regarding the rubber, I'm not familiar with that conversation or that reference. I can definitely look into that, and I can try and follow up with some people that might be aware of that conversation.
It was in one of the presentations when they first, when they very, very first came out.
Okay.
Okay. But that's just some of my things I wanted to put out there, Mayor, and I would love to have a consensus or at least some dialogue with my colleagues on moving forward to raising the appropriated, or amending the appropriated budget for... To $50,000 to $75,000. I would love to hear that discussion.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hare. So just to clarify, Mr. Manager, what are we doing today? Just reviewing the policies? I saw there were some recommendations made by staff to not make any changes based on... What's the outcome desire today?
Yes, sir. Can you go back to your recommendation slide? And thank you. You did a great job, sir. Did a great job. Yes, that's, I think, the primary recommendation, is that there is a lot of interest around this topic. What he was showing as well on one of the slides is that the program is still working. People are still able to submit the requests. We're still studying traffic patterns and standards, but staff is recommending, and it's just a recommendation, that you not address the thresholds until we receive back the report. Number one, want to make sure, a variety of things. Sheila, if you want to come up if needed, and it may not be needed at the moment, but the... And Brian, what is the SS4A going to tell us? I mean...
So SS4A, Safe Streets for All, is going to tell us a handful of items. The main one is going to tell us where the fatal and serious injury crashes are, and serious injury is essentially whenever you have to be loaded into an ambulance and taken to the hospital. It's going to tell us where they're being located, whether it's an intersection or a roadway, and it's going to tell us how we can help minimize the occurrence of them and also the severity of them. That's the main focus of it. But the second part, the part that we were able to put in there that not a lot of other municipalities or towns have, is a peer review of our RTMP against everybody else's speed reduction and traffic calming programs that they have, not only in our region, but also along other population-type, population-similar cities across the country, and how they're able to help minimize and mitigate speeding.
So that's just a recommendation. The other one to say about the funding, if we ever run out of money for anything, from speed humps to... I know Dr. Newton is still here, to removing houses, because we never put in enough money to take down all of the houses and structures that need to. We will come back. I promise you that. This year's budget, you did a number of things. We froze positions, we raised the tax rate, and we made significant cuts in a lot of the budget items. We knew that those cuts were going to be unpopular and are not going to be sustainable, given your interests, given council's interest and the community's interest for traffic calming measures. But if we run out of the $10,000 that is there, we will come back. Will we not, Brian? Will we not, Sheila? We will come back and we will make you aware of that. If council wants to allocate more money now, you can. And I, for some reason, I'm drawing a real blank, Brian. When a new speed bump is put in, if it meets warrants, it does not require council authority. We're able to put that in based upon an administrative policy.
Correct.
And... But if we're one that the neighborhood wants to pay for, we would have to... We bring those back to council?
I'm 90% confident on this, but I believe that is something that if a neighborhood essentially gets their petition approved, and they get the petition signed off and they bring it to staff, then they can pay for it out of pocket, and the city provides labor for the installation.
Right. I might want to, now returning, check on that, because technically, we're receiving money. And just to... So council's aware for those situations happen, but council, if y'all are interested in having us prepare a budget ordinance to move money for... That you would vote on at a regular meeting, we can do that. But as I said, I promise you, we'll bring you back any request if we run out of money, sir, because we do know that this is something that many of the communities, the people who call you, and then y'all call us, or reach out directly, Michelle is very interested. But I'd be remiss if I also didn't tell you, Chief Dubb, do we like speed humps? And so I think that what Brian was also saying is that maybe the Safe Streets for All is going to be an opportunity for us to see that if people are putting them in, they're doing something like the cushions. That would... Did you say those are more expensive?
They are more expensive. Everything is more expensive than a speed hump. Speed hump is that cheapest.
You don't have any good news today, do you, sir?
All right, guys.
It's almost the end of the day.
All right. Well, speaking of that, that was a great segue. All right. So let's try to bring it home. I do have some other council members who've been patiently waiting. Councilmember Benevente and Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, you did a really great... Your presentation on a very dense material, so I just wanted to say you did a really great job with all that. I think that the... Not today, but the bigger question about the debate we're having between the effectiveness, the cost, and liability, and then I heard you saying that there's only one person or one and a half people working on this issue as well. You know, if we really want to talk about investing more money into this process, I think it's... It might be with staff, and it might be with investing in that department to be able to process more and maybe even assist people with their signatures, because of those 34, I think you said, that are still open, I know one of them is off of Landau in Hillendale West that does have a lot of issues, has been approved and authorized for up to three or four, because it is that through-passway that Councilmember Hare mentioned, and they are struggling just as a community to get all these... I think they need, what percentage of the identified folks to do it? 80%?
Yes. So...
They've got apartment complexes.
There's a lot of percentages here. So it's 85% of households within the affected area, but 70% within the affected area have to approve.
Exactly right. So that 70% number is one that they're having a hard time getting to, because, again, imagine three speed bumps over almost, I think, two or miles worth of terrain, so that's a lot of people to get to that 75. So again, just, I appreciate your comments about, you know, liability and all that, but I think it's... You're basing that off of the current tools that you have to work with, the current staff and the current budget you have to work with. And it's one of those things that, when I first got on council, sidewalks and speed bumps were not my passion and the reason I ran for council, but I got to tell you, that's at least 60, 70% of my emails are about this issue.
Is that your passion now?
Well, it's... That's another story for another day. But to make the point that whether speed bumps or speed humps are the most effective thing, people want more choice. People want to... I want us to give power back to the people on this topic, and I know currently, the system is in place to where they can pay portions of it themselves if they don't meet the threshold requirements, but maybe, again, speed bump isn't the best thing because of some of Chief Dubb's concerns, some other concerns. You shared some really great examples of like planting a tree that kind of just kind of bricks and makes a straightaway a little bit more curvy. And yes, there's liability that maybe the community will have to sign off or on on. The cost may be more than $3,000 to $5,000, but I want us to give that opportunity and that option back to the neighborhood to decide whether or not that's the direction that they want to go. And so I get your point about waiting until we get the big, big federal study done a year from now. I don't know if I'm going to be here a year from now, so obviously, my interest... I don't know if I'm going to be here a year from now, so obviously, my interest is in trying to do something sooner than later as it relates to giving people more options on how to address um their needs. So uh this this graph, this this um this chart that you made, the speed hump request summary, yeah, that that looks really, really great. I think the sooner that we can get that put out there somewhere, people understand the process, the better. And then again, maybe their option isn't just for a speed hump, but maybe they could have two or three other options. Maybe one of those options is those, what they have on haymon, right? The flashing, you know, um.
Radar feedback signs.
Radar feedback signs. And and it's not necessarily just about effectiveness, right? We know that some of this stuff is just perception that the community has about whether an investment is being made. So no, it might not be as effective in slowing people down, but maybe, per the data, there wasn't that much speeding going on anyways. But they still wanted some kind of investment in their neighborhood as it relates to this arena. So maybe they'll be willing to say, no, it's not going to stop the, on on the number side, all this speeding, but it makes us feel like we're doing something about it. Um and I don't think we can discount that, because, I mean, that's kind of the point of government, right? Oftentimes, we make decisions not based on the effectiveness, ShotSpotter, but we makes people feel better.
There's a fashion.
So let's just, let's just put it out there, like this, that's not, that's not a hinge point or or crux of how effective it is or isn't, because we're a feel-good, you know, uh organization at the same time. So um if there was any action we were going to take today, it would still be to renew my original request when I think I first made this spec- this this council member request on this issue, is to give more of a menu using the current process, but that's so that people can decide, we don't meet the threshold, we're going to pay that part of the speed bump, or maybe we'll pay a little bit more for that radar. Maybe we'll pay a little bit more for a tree. Um but it's going to be up to the community to organize themselves, but we're at least giving power back to the people on this topic. So um I'm prepared to make a motion after Councilmember Thompson speaks.
All right. Um Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Bryant, thank you for the presentation. It was great. Uh no need to be nervous. I believe not just you, but all the city staff is doing the best they can to provide our constituents the services and the safety that they need to live in the city of Fayetteville. Uh I believe a while ago, and I'm gonna go off script here a minute, a while ago, you gave us, or somebody in staff gave us a traffic calming measures presentation, gave us a lot of uh scenarios on what worked and what didn't work. What was cost-effective and what wasn't cost-effective.
Yep.
And I think we all circled right back to speed humps. So my question is three. You recommended that we do not do anything until twenty-twenty-five until you get back your SS4A, I guess, survey. One is, who does that survey? And does that survey consist of neighborhoods that have one way in and one way out? And I'mma uh elaborate just a little bit, because I had to send Doug a video over the weekend of a neighborhood who's had three crashes in less than a month that locked in the entire community of three hundred and seventy-three homes.
So I can answer, that's a two-pronged answer on this.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh I'm gonna start with the second prong first. One way in, one way out, that is something that we can address with the CTP. That is something that uh I believe that you might be talking about the Robin Hill.
That is correct.
Yes. Um and so that is something that SS4A would not necessarily be addressing about one way in, one way out neighborhoods. However, SS4A is mainly prior primarily focused on fatal and serious injury crashes. The RTMP peer review study part is not going to be a comprehensive review of every neighborhood and trying to identify where speed humps should be installed in those neighborhoods. It's more about reviewing our process, comparing it to the processes of all the other municipalities, and determining, oh, our thresholds might be too high, this number is uh, the speed is unattainable primarily, or given our numbers, we should actually drop it this lower, or have you guys considered uh changing it to a new metric, uh those type of things? And so that's what the SS4A. And and as far as who's actually doing the SS4A, consultants already been selected after the RFQ process, and we are actually holding the kickoff meeting tomorrow.
Now, you mentioned the word unattainable, and that was part of my next question. On RTMP, you stated that in your presentation, that you only have two streets, Chilton and Tyree, which I delivered mail on both of them, the longest since twenty-twenty-one, I believe? Why do you think that is? And do you think the reason is because the signatures of getting seventy percent is unattainable?
It's, it could be partly that, yes. Um I don't know if I want to out myself on this, but I live in the neighborhood that is on Chilton Drive. Um and of that neighborhood, I'm familiar with the residents of that neighborhood. Some of them are adamantly against all the speeders that cut through it, but a lot of them can be considered renters who are very transitory in nature. And so, you know, one year they're there, and then by the time that everybody starts getting the signatures collected, the signatures for the people, they might move on. Uh and whenever it comes to signatures for petitions, it can also, whether it be the resident or the homeowner, then the homeowner will take precedent over the resident of that location. But we do need a signature from a house in that area.
And that brings me to another question, because we talked about uh signatures, and I asked you to repeat that statement, because I was under the impression that there was a way that you can be exempt. So is there any way in the RTMP that a neighborhood that can't obtain getting the seventy percent uh signatures required, get exempt from that, just petition to council to have them installed anyway?
I have not found one uh in record or through ordinance or RTMP yet, no.
Okay. Would that be something that the SS4A will be able to change when we possibly come back to it in, would you say, fall of twenty-twenty-five?
Uh it would be fall of twenty-twenty-five, and if that was a suggested best practices, then that would be something that they they would bring with the recommendations. But if it was not best practice, then they would not recommend it.
Thank you very much.
All right, hold on. Um we've got uh Mayor Pro Tim, we've got Councilmember Banks, well, got Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin and Mayor Pro Tim. And Council, I want you to notice something. If you press, and we'll we'll clear this at the end of this vote, if you press to speak, your name appears to the top, so always call from the bottom, because it, on your board, you'll see your name at the top saying, hey, I should be next. But that's, that's why that happens, because really, it's in, it's already in there, and they just put you at the top. I don't know why the sure system does that, but that's what's going on. All right, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin and Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Um my question is, in certain areas, like um I live off of Hope Loop, and that road is considered a state road. Um there's been several crashes there. Um I was able to um work with the state, and they put um, they started off repaving it with the lines, um because cars was running to the homes off of Hope Loop. Um they were able to put reflectors. Um but still, to this day, um two of uh the officers um were were got hit by vehicles. Um and this is is in a school zone. So I guess my question is, are we also partnering, I know this, we're speaking of a grant, but are we partnering with um the state and the county when it comes to funding? Because again, some of these areas are state roads, um and also in school zones.
So in response to SS4A, we are going to be working with NCDOT whenever we're going through the uh study. Uh in response to the Hope Loop, the two crashes involving the, I believe they were traffic control officers with the uh school zones, uh we have done the research on the city side, and we have referenced those crashes to NCDOT requesting that they address this issue, and we've brought it to their attention. Because they are pedestrian crashes, it will be also be included or should be included with SS4A study information and data. Uh that said, um in terms of school, we are going to be identifying stakeholders as part of the project team whenever we're going through SS4A, and I believe that we are going to be reaching out to the school whenever we're reaching, uh whenever we're talking about the project team.
Okay, thank you. Can you keep me posted on on that? Um and then.
Yeah.
My um last question is, I noticed that um we do currently have like uh the speeds, what are the, I forgot, what are those called? What it, um the Texas speed or?
Speed radar.
Okay, speed radar.
Uh, speed feedback radar or something like that.
Okay, so how long are those in those area? Because again, we have one that's off Hope Loop. Um what's the timeframe as far as how long it's going to stay at that location?
So speed feedback radars are not something that are typically handled or uh, well, not typically, they're not handled by traffic services or public services. They are something that are used by law enforcement agencies. Uh they're not used by NCDOT either. So they're they're law enforcement, law enforcement agency tool. Uh so that might be something that Chief Braden might answer, although I don't want to call him out on the spot.
Just a quick answer. We use those, yeah, I think four total aside. Each of the district captains, based on complaints that they receive, will put them out to do our own surveys and determine whether our traffic unit or enforcement action needs to be conducted in those areas. So we use it as a tool to decide, okay, where we need to go and conduct enforcement actions as well.
But and and I I get that, but is it a timeframe? Like, how long do you know if it's going to be sitting at that particular location?
No, there's no set amount of time. It'll be here for X amount of days. Uh usually, it's to determine whether there is a need for further action, and then we move on to the next one.
So you are are monitoring to see, I mean, the improvement or if it needs to go somewhere else where there's additional accident.
What it does, it gives us that feedback of, you know, like, just like the the lines on the ground.
Mm-hmm.
You know, sometimes there's a perceived, a perceived problem, but the actual problem is not really there. So, you know, it gives us an idea of, yes, this is the time of day that we need to be in here, because this is the most public time and violation.
Okay, well, thank you, because I can say it, I feel like it's been helping in that area, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Uh we got, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's two things that, um so speed bumps that, so I have speed bumps in my neighborhood, and I hate speed bumps, I will tell you that flat out. I hate them.
The speeder.
Well, the reason why I hate them is, it takes fifteen minutes to get to my house if a um emergency vehicle had to come through. And the question I wanted to answer to you is, I do have a neighborhood, what should I go to? And every time I go to it, a new person in the neighborhood screams about it to me about speed bumps. And it's interesting that they have been approved for speed bumps, but they can't get people to sign off on them. And the people that have to sign off of on them are the people that it is in front of their house. So what they hear all night long is the thunk, the thunk, the thunk. So you have to get them on each side, so you have to have four of them. So that's where a lot of the problems come into, because if you're beside the speed bump, you're hearing it all night long, so it kind of affects you. But I was gonna go back to what Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin said, and I was gonna bring it up, the speed radars. To me, putting some money for that is effective. Now, my neighborhood got them when, and they bought them a long time ago, and they were like, at that point, they were only like five hundred dollars. Now they're like twenty-five hundred dollars.
Speed bumps or the radar detectors?
The radar detectors. And what basically happens is when, you know, we see certain areas of the neighborhood, they pick it up, and they take it to that part of the neighborhood. Does it, does it help? I think it helps tremendously, to be honest with you. And I think we need more than four, because the.
We're a big city.
We're a big city, we're a big, growing city, and to have only four, each one of us in our district could have eight of them and still not be enough.
What? Oh, no. Oh, no, sorry.
It's actually the one with the uh lights. Yeah. But I mean, I think it's, I think it's more of technology, and I think it's more of something we need to look at. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take some action today on this issue. I think that um if I could, we we can direct staff to come back to us with that menu of options to include maybe those radar or speed sentry-type things. Um I just think that the people deserve uh more options, um so that they're not, like Councilmember Jensen was saying, are only thinking in terms of speed bumps, if that's going to be a detriment for the people hearing the noise or for the fire department, et cetera. Um so if we can have more of a menu, that we can have more discussions with our community members about things that make them feel safer, because I get you, maybe the cheapest and most effective thing is a speed bump, but the people want what they want. So um can that be the direction to staff, that they come back to us with a larger menu of options for the community to be able to have requests?
And if you could expand that a bit.
Yes, sir.
To to any other speed uh deterrents.
Traffic calming.
Traffic calming, yeah. Because, you know, we've talked about this.
Yes, sir.
Forever. Um but uh if if there's some other things that we can do in a parallel time track.
So I'll restate my motion then, Mr. Mayor. Um if we could direct staff to uh bring back um a menu of street calming or traffic calming measures uh that the people can, you know, make requests for through the existing process. Is there a second?
All right.
I have a question before the motion.
Well, let's see if there's a second first.
Well, he may be trying to get to you a second. Was there some clarification on that?
I have a question on the motion. I have a question for Mr. Brian.
All right. Do do.
I was, I was trying to say, did you hear?
And they recommended that we wait for a year, and now we're saying, thanks for that recommendation, but.
So you're setting a quicker timeframe than.
I I don't want to wait until s- s- fall twenty-twenty. We can get that information back, but I still want the people to have an opportunity to to unders- to have more options.
So are you time-specific on your your motion for council, I mean, for staff to bring us? I mean, they know this stuff, they they do it for a living.
Yes, sir. I mean, if if that's the case, the next work session.
Ms. Sheila, you know some traffic calming recommendations. How you doing?
Good evening, Council. Um so the question is, we would like specific direction. We have come to council, um I believe at one occasion, if not two, with specific traffic calming measures. And so.
I mentioned it.
And our recommendation, each of those times, has been to to wait for this SS4A, or at least the last time was to wait for the SS4A study.
Yeah, so I guess by the time of the next work session, we want to see maybe that that, what do you call it, that that flow chart that you guys created, established, but it doesn't say speed bump process, it says traffic calming process, because in fact, there's going to be a a menu of items that folks can uh seek out beyond simply speed bumps.
Go ahead.
The menu of options, and we can certainly come back, we just want to be sure that council understands it would be almost a duplicate of a previous presentation that we presented.
I don't want a presentation, I want it implemented, so that from now on, if me and my neighborhood said, hey, we have a crazy amount of speeding, and we want to seek out some.
So are you, are you saying, Councilmember, you want to take some action before the report? Is that what would?
Yes, so right now, when someone says, we have issues in our neighborhood with uh speeding, and right now, the only thing they can really request is speed bumps. If instead, we said, hey, our neighborhood has issue with speeding, we want to see the menu of options. And maybe they'll qualify for speed bumps, maybe they're more interested in the speed sentry, maybe they're more interested in something else, they get a menu of options, and they get to move forward with what they want. And sometimes, that's going to include them paying it for themselves. Um i- if that's what the staff ends up saying, that, you know, we only have this much budget, three to five for speed bumps, it's going to be five to ten for speed sentries, it's going to be ten to fifteen for a tree. You know, i- it depends on what menu option a community decides is best for them. But I want that to be the way we move forward with that, you know, effort to push out that that flow chart, so more people understand what's available to them.
But we already have that list.
Apparently not.
All right, so.
The short answer is no.
Let me go, a couple of questions here. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, Thompson, Hare, and then and then council will try to push to a resolution. And then two, I think, you know, you all are are very in touch with your citizens anyway at these community watches, I think we need to help them get these signatures. We've got thirty-plus people on a list that's that's been approved in conceptually, but just don't have the signatures. So so a lot of them don't know what to do next, a lot of them have forgotten and moved on to something else, so we've got to impress upon them the importance of getting those signatures done. So, I'll go to Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, Thompson, Hare, then, then we need some action, or some inaction.
Um, just for clarity, I, if I can recall, we've had that presentation-
About ten times.
Like I mentioned, too, was, and it even had the amount, and I think what our council issue was, we were trying to find some additional funding.
Yep.
I think that was the issue, but we have all that information. But if we don't have the funding, that's where we need to be voting on some funding.
Because let's just say, there's ten neighborhoods that put in a request, and then five of them say, I want a speed sentry, and we know that's gonna cost ten thousand dollars apiece, then we have to go from there. Do they even qualify the threshold? You know what I'm saying? Then, we will have to pay. If they don't qualify for the threshold, then they're gonna have to contribute.
Let me see if I'm-
That information is out there.
It's not about information, it's not policy.
What he's saying is, is from a policy procedural perspective, after they do the analysis, they put them on the list. But right now, the only option, once you get to that list, is a speed bump, right?
And the reason we do that is because that is the most cost-effective-
I, I got that. So that's a budget decision that you make to give them that option.
Not necessarily only budget, in terms of efficiency of the actual measure. So in other words, even if you were to, uh, for example, the, the device that you were just talking about is more a law enforcement method, and not really something that we would use in the engineering analysis.
So, I guess what I'm saying is that, again, efficiency and likelihood of actually having an impact is not a requirement for us to spend money on things, i.e. ShotSpotter. So we can do things that may or may not actually have a positive impact, as long as it makes people feel good, which includes speed sentries. We don't know if a cop is gonna be perfectly waiting there for that thing to flash, and for them to go get them, but you know what? The older folks in our neighborhoods, makes them feel so good, it really does. And if they want to pay for that, they should be able to do that.
Well, I, I, I won't break it down, I, I mean, there is probably some deterrent of showing you how fast you're going, right? But, the, the other, I guess what I think he's trying to go is, right now, you, we put in a request for a street to be analyzed, you analyze it and say, hey, based on data, we say that you have a speeding problem, but right now, your answer is a speed bump. Our, that is our process currently, right?
That's right, because we, uh, our staff does not make a recommendation based on the community's regard.
I'm just keeping that point for a minute. So I think what councilmember is saying is that, are there any other alternatives that can also be given for a community other than the speed bump? So, in other words, it, does a, does a tree work? Does, uh, some other mitigating tool, is it available? Right now, the only thing we offer them, when a citizen does this process, is a speed bump that requires seventy to eighty percent signature approval, right?
On, on citizen requests, speed bump is the only one that is available. Whenever we're aware that a speeding problem is present, and there are also crash problems that are present, then that's whenever we start looking at the engineering resolutions that we can also apply. And that's how traffic circles can be implemented on roads as well.
Okay. All right, so did that address it? Did you want that expanded, as to what happens?
Exactly right, because right now, that threshold means how many more accidents have to happen? How many more potential injuries or worse have to happen, before it meets the threshold for the engineers to get involved? I understand from the engineering standpoint, that it, it's about that data, but from a community standpoint, they don't want to wait for that, those conditions to occur.
Well, it's just been an ongoing process, but, but I think, if, if I hear you correctly, they can still be coming back with that other report information-
Of course, of course.
While other options-
Yes, sir.
You're asking them to bring back other options for the current process.
For the current process, and again, if the, we, if we see the community demand, then we'll know that the city manager will come back to us asking for budget. And if it doesn't have a demand, then we keep on trucking.
All right, so we, we're pretty clear on that. Councilmember Thompson, and then, uh, we'll, we'll see if we can get, then Hare, and then we'll get, see if we can get some action on this, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my concern is, maybe if we used to streamline the current process we have, we wouldn't need any additional, uh, mitigation. But, my question is funding. Uh, Mr. Bryant, you mentioned that we only have ten thousand dollars for the program. You said it was thirty-three hundred dollars, thirty-three hundred dollars per speed hump. So how many have we gone through this year? Because I've not seen nobody from staff asking more money for the RTMP. I'm getting it, I'm getting it.
So, for insulation, for insulation, uh, we have not installed any speed humps for insulation this fiscal year yet.
Thank you, sir. So, the point I'm trying to make is, isn't that a sign that the process needs some streamlining? If people can't get the signatures required, to get the speed humps installed?
Let me, let me, uh, like many of you, um, I, uh, Mr. Hare was my councilmember, and I lived on Guy Burger Drive. I refused to sign the, the speed hump petition. It was, they were putting it right in front of my house, I was a third house in. And I think, um, it, to me, was, I told them, as long as y'all can put it past my house, I'm good. And so, I think that we have to balance the need for the signatures for the people who said, yeah, I don't like speeding, but I don't want to be inconvenienced, versus the people who say that they want the speed humps installed.
Look, let me rephrase my statement then. If we have a hundred percent of signatures where the speed humps are to be installed, and can't get any of the signatures from the three hundred and some odd residents who live in the back of the problem, that are probably renters, that's where we need to streamline the process. If the people that is speeding in front of my house are okay with it, then everybody else should be okay with it.
And, and I don't know, is it owners that will sign, or is it renters, or is it owners that have to sign?
Uh, it, it's both, but owners take precedent over renters if there's a dispute with who's signing for the house.
Right. But it is, this is, um, mayor and council, um, I think that, uh, some of you recall the presentation that Sheila actually gave, um, that talked about the various types of speed, um, uh, traffic calm, Brian, traffic calming measures. We'll be happy to send that back out to you, and actually program this as well for your, um, the four, uh, because I think that, um, uh, I'm not sure, the ten thousand dollars in the budget, again, anytime that y'all want, or we run out of money, we're happy to come back, but if y'all want to put more in-
Well, let me just reemphasize, Doug, is that I'm specifically talking about a specific neighborhood that has one way in, one way out.
I know.
I have sent you the evidence where they have to have three accidents, where they have blocked off their entire community. You can't go to work, because now you can't get out of your neighborhood.
But it's-
So we have to do something, you know, soon.
And, and we, and one of the things that Brian and company would look at, they would look at those accidents with the police department, see if those were speed-related as well, and that would then trigger stuff like they did in our neighborhood, um, uh, where we have, uh, what do you call those, um, bike lanes on Hilliard, uh, what do those call those? Yeah, the pedestrian-
Motor use lanes. Motor use lanes.
Yeah.
Well, let me just, let me just add one more thing, Doug, because you brought something else up, too. Uh, in Cross Creek, we have a new captain, our chief is Captain DeJesus now. So now that we have these traffic accidents on these roads, and they set a patrol out there, start issuing out tickets for people that are speeding, will your SS4A evaluation contact the police department to see how many issued ti- tickets they issued on that road that required the speed humps?
So, SS4A does have police department involvement through, uh, a sergeant and a lieutenant. Their names are eluding me right now, so don't want to put them on the spot. But they do have police department involvement. As far as how they're gonna be involved, that is still to be determined by the consultant and the police department themselves. Again, the initial kickoff is gonna be tomorrow.
Great job, Bryant, appreciate you. You too, Ms. Sheila.
All right, Councilmember Hare, you clear?
No, sir.
I want to say what I gotta say, sir. Uh, for one thing, I, I, I don't think that I would be able to support the motion, and let me just say why. I mean, thank you for your, your presentation. Everything that, uh, Brian has, you know, that our presenters have given us tonight, as far as all the different options, which I think is a part of the motion, I have given to my constituents on several times over the, over the years, and most, most recently, this presentation that's been given, we've heard, we've had it before. The issue with it has been, for the most part, has been budget. But, uh, uh, the, the three-way turns, the, uh, the aligning the streets, uh, the, the roundabout, the, the speed humps, the cushion stops, or the cushion, um, speed humps, and, I mean, the, all the other, uh, options that you've given us, I can't tell you how many times I have sent that presentation to my district and had our engineers to come and speak at our communities about these options. I just had them at, not long ago, it's been a few months ago, I've had them at Fox Fire, I've had them at, um, uh, New Panda Rosa, and I've had them at Summer Hill. So, these options are there, the folks are aware of them. Uh, we probably don't speak about them as much, because the ones that we mostly speak of are, is the speed hump one. But I have shared those options many, many, many times. If we can get, uh, some funding, uh, for it, I think it is, would be good. And also, even though, because the speed hump is more known, I would like to, uh, put a motion on the table after this one to, uh, increase our, uh, budget from fifteen, I'm not at that page now-
From ten.
To, uh, fifty thousand.
So, Councilmember Hare, before we do that, and we still have, have a motion here-
Yes, sir.
Council, just want you to, to look at, you have approximately funding for three speed bumps in, in the budget, which is, you know, as we, as we say, that's not enough, but it hasn't, hasn't been used. So something with the process needs to be changed, whether we lower the threshold for what qualifies, whether we do something-
That's it.
Because you've got to get the, 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 the pipeline unclogged for the work. And then, I, I agree, add the budget. So we don't have a budget problem.
Even if we don't, as I was saying, the, the, the ad hoc committee that we had some time ago, uh, we need to maybe revisit that, because the, the, the benchmarks that the community, we're asking the communities to meet, I think one time, it was like, three thousand cars in your neighborhood on your street. Who gets three thousand car, I mean, not everybody, but I know, I don't get three thousand cars. Uh, I think it's seven days, unless they have changed the period, down of cars that's on your street. So we need to look at that, so if we want to look at that first, before requesting that amount, even though I heard what the city manager said, and I greatly appreciate that, uh, I'm, I, I'm, I'm willing to stand down and put the ad hoc committee back together.
Well, I'm just thinking that you all on to something, that possibly, and I know Councilmember Benevente has his motion, so I'll, I'll go to him in a minute, but we have enough devices between what the chief has, with the radar, and this little, uh, black box that, that has the, uh, the cable across, that maybe that can be the trigger to say if, out of the certain number of cars, or for certain percentages traveling over, over the, the speed limit-
That they use.
That, that could trigger the, so that is one of the criterias that you already use. You use whatever the data he collects, and the data that's across there to determine the speed bump. You determine the need of the speed bump, but how about the qualification? They still have to get the signatures. So even though the, the, the computer says you have speeders, they still have to go through the process to get the signatures.
Yes, because we have to have citizen approval, resident approval, saying, yes, I want a speed hump directly in front of my house.
And then you have to get the volume of the cars, then you have to get the speed of the cars.
The criteria is eighty percent, or seventy percent.
And the signatures of the cars.
So-
So there's a number of things you have to get.
So the percentages is what you all could look at, but there's something about what we're doing that's not-
We got, I'm, look at-
I want to correct what Mario Benevente just said. Uh, it's a hundred percent of where the speed humps are actually located.
One hundred percent.
Hundred percent of where the speed humps are directly in front of the house. Eighty percent of the households within a study area have to be contacted. Whether they say yes or no, they just have to be contacted. Seventy per, seventy percent of the study area has to say yes.
So a speed hump goes left or right, so two, two residents?
If they split a parcel, then it's the two on that side, and the two on the other side of the street.
All right, all right, so council, uh, Benevente, let's see what we can do to move this on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a lot, I, I support Councilmember Hare and Thompson's points about, uh, addressing the threshold issue. I'm certainly welcome to hear a motion about doing that ad hoc committee again. But, no matter what, I think that, I hope that we can have a majority say that the menu of options, so that the people have, uh, more of a say, and what is best for their neighborhoods. Um, that's my motion right now. I'll restate it again, that moving forward, the established process, this flow chart, doesn't just say speed hump, but traffic calming measures. And so, between now and the next work session, I'd like to see that, that final menu options of, of things that community members can ask for, speed sentries, radars, um, tr- whatever the things that you have presented before, and a price tag with them, uh, and an idea of what sort of threshold needs to be met for them to qualify, and if not, the citizens will pay for it themselves. So that's my motion again, and I think I had a second from somewhere.
Where was the second at?
I'm looking for it now. Y'all don't want them to have options, okay.
All right, so, gotta go to Mayor Protim, and then-
If it's dead, I don't need that.
Is it? Do you have a second?
Well-
Looking for a second. Do you guys have a questions about it? Because y'all keep looking around, yep.
Councilmember McNair, you had a question? Okay.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of, of my constituents having options, however, um, the, the budget plays a major part here. So, is this the right time for that, is what I'm asking?
I think that, just as the mayor said earlier, once we start to see the demand, we can have a response, you know, the, what is that? Uh, basics of economics, there, there's a, there's a demand, and it'll, it'll get met by the, the market. So, if we're the market saying that we'll put more money into it, we will. But we don't know what the demand is until we give the option.
And, and, and mayor, if I, yes, you were coming to me, but-
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, ju- just, just one follow-up, because I know my colleagues do this. As long as we as councilmembers, we gotta let our neighborhoods know about these options, okay? The only thing that we kind of put out a lot is speed humps, for my neighborhoods to know of-
Well, it's-
The reason, let me just finish, please, sir. The, the reason right now-
Can y'all turn, Councilmember Hare's microphone?
The reason right now, in, and I'm gonna give you several neighborhoods. The reason right now, in my neighborhood, where I live on Seabrook Road, the reason that they have the speed calming lines, or we call them bike lanes, is because the community cried out for them, they are running all through my neighborhood. The reason that my community have them in Inglewood was because my, my, my chairman and his wife, and the rest of the folk over there, were calling for the speed narrowing devices, okay? So I'm just going back to say, uh, the, if they don't know, it's because we are not sharing it with them. Because I share it with them, that's how they know.
So to the staff, I need the staff to clarify, if my neighborhood asks for a speed sentry, is there a way for them to get it right now, since Councilmember Hare says that it's available to them?
So with regards to speed radar feedback signs, that, again, not traffic services, but to my knowledge, no, that's not us.
So, that's not true, Councilmember Hare, they don't have that option.
No, sir, I think what the divide is on, on the speed sentry, those are two different things. That is something that has been mainly, I'm not, it is used for those counts, to get those measures. But that comes through our police department-
So that's how they're currently being used, that's correct, but that's not my request.
Councilmember Benevente, hold on.
That's not, that's not a device like, it's in storage, and you go and get that, that's not how that particular device is used. If a neighborhood is requiring a speed data sentry, however we pronounce that correctly, the neighborhood can get that, uh-
As a way to get a speed hump.
And, right, and it's all along that line, and I have asked for it, and had it throughout the district for, on many of the-
So I understand that totally, and that's not at all what I'm asking for. What I'm saying is that after they do a speed sentry study, if they say, hey, you qualify for several options, you can get a speed bump because there's so much speeding, you could get a speed sentry permanently installed. That's not currently an option, no matter how much we tell people it is, it's not currently an option, so that's not true. There's several traffic calming measures that are not on the menu right now.
Right, well, Councilmember Benevente, you, you put your motion, we didn't, I didn't recall a second, but-
We didn't, can we ask one more time?
Uh, uh, no, we got, we've got other speakers here, you know, man, we can circle back. But, I think, you, you dovetail into my point, that if we want to look at the process for other options other than what we currently have, we can't figure it out today, but if there is other options that, once they look and qual, and says a street qualifies, what can we do to help this program be better utilized? That's what our challenge is. Is it money? Is it process? Is it education? Is it both? So, we, we may not have that answer here, but if, if, as we get this discussion to a point, I want to see maybe that you can propose, if there's support for it, for them to come back and tell us, all right, you're doing it this way, and you have a twenty-five percent success rate of people using this program. But if you did it this way, that would increase to seventy-five or a hundred percent, whatever that looks like. So that's all I'm just trying to get you to consider, but let me go to Councilmember McNair, you already spoke, and then Mc- You had, you had something else?
Yeah, the reason why I, I feel that we, uh, need options is because, um, most of my, um, constituents run into this issue, uh, with, um, a divided decision about whether they want the speed humps or not. And so, they end up coming back to me each time we have a meeting about the same thing. So if we have options, I do believe that we kind of like eliminate them, um, repeating the circle, the cycle.
All right, well, well, we're gonna have to circle back to that, because I got Councilmember Mahandros, who's been patiently waiting, Banks McLaughlin, and then council, because we've been so passionate tonight, it's almost the fourth hour, and we've got a real important item with text amendments, that I would ask that you possibly, yeah, we, we're gonna get to the councilmember request, they've, they've got time connections to them. But six point oh seven, if you, after you finish this, because that is something that is important, and we're gonna need to spend some time on it, would, would there be any thought or consideration in putting that on our next work session? Because it's a, the UDO committee has some input on that, and it's been, it's some tedious work, so I know- Yeah. Sure. All right, all right, we will, when we get to that. Let me get to Councilmember Mahandros, he's been patient, and Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Councilman Mahandros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern is, we're listening to all the discussion, I hear my, my colleagues' concerns with regard to the, um, traffic calming measures. To me, it's, it's kind of like the, um, traffic, um, or road paving discussion. So we went from a, um, what could have been described as a politically, political pressure to get streets repaved in certain neighborhoods, to a data-driven, I think manager, correct me if I'm wrong, staff has pretty much cataloged every street in the neighborhood- every street in the neighborhood, and there's an equation or there's certain criteria from the age of the road to the traffic on the road to the condition of the road, how we repave things. So we have similar criteria for traffic calming measures, including certain thresholds that need to be met, for example, for the speed humps. So it sounds like we're trying to circumvent the data and go back to the good old boy way of doing things instead of what the data is telling us. So, you know, staff is the experts in the field. If they're saying that that is required, I mean, I'm sure, well, maybe I'm not sure, did staff create that criteria or did they pull from best practices from other municipalities and states across the state of North Carolina and the country?
So to respond to that, you know, staff would not recommend something where the data does not support the efficiency and efficacy of that process. So, and I think it's important to use that because that holds true for all of our work. It's important that we remain credible to us and our engineering profession to make recommendations that are in the best interest of the city and the largest public good. And to that end, staff would not make a recommendation that is not supported by engineering data.
That's what I was certain of. Thank you for confirming that. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Council... Banks McLaughlin?
Okay, I'll make it quick. Thank you, Mayor. Now, you said for the speed bumps, those are cost efficient. Correct. That's the best, I mean, that's one of the great things that we're doing in our community. The rest of them is a little bit more expensive. My thing is, as far as, I'm not saying I'm opposed of giving people options, but if we're already having issues streamlining signatures for people in a community to get speed bumps, I think that's what we need to be more focused on. Because again, myself, I have a community, Clifdale West. They have already been approved, and they're still trying to figure out how to get signatures. I've even, you know, asked the assist to walk those neighborhoods. My, I guess my issue is, if we already trying to figure out how to fund additional speed bumps and with the, I keep forgetting what it's called, the speed monitor things, why will we give people more options if we can't even fund what we currently have right now? So that's, so that's my issue. If they can't pay for speed bumps, what makes you think, no, they can't?
Uh, Council, Councilmember Benevente.
What I was gonna say, well, that's my reason for not supporting it, because again, I feel like we need to focus more on streamlining what we already have to better assist with that versus adding more option. More options is just gonna leave, it's gonna get messy. And again, it's almost like we're making promises that we can't even fund. We can't even fund what we currently have now. So I think that's, to me, is just a waste of time. And just like Councilmember Hare mentioned, when you go to those community watch me like myself, I inform my community what options they have and how to go about getting speed bumps or even with temporary signagees to help with the, well, alleviate the speeding. So I won't be supporting that.
So, Council, let me ask you a question. Who agrees that they would like for the program to be better utilized and more successful than we currently have? Okay, all right. If we are there, how about if there's a consensus to ask them to come back with how we do that, right? Because we don't, I don't know, I don't know that we have a funding problem. I don't know that we have, I think we have a process problem. We might have a little bit of both, right? Are we doing it the right way that we have zero projects out of 31 that have been done this year so far, right? So it sounds like everybody's on the same page with that. We're trying to figure out the how when I think we all agree 100% on the what. The what is, we want more speed bumps and speed calming measures in our communities to deter speeding. So, right. So the how is, is I think if we can assign them to do that, but I think that gets us over the hump, because right now, we're trying to figure out all of that right now. All right. Councilmember Benevente, you had something real quick?
No, get over the hump. That was funny. That was a good play on words. But Ms. Sheila, you just said that the current established thresholds are based on your professional opinion on those things. I'm with Councilmember Hare and Thompson and Mayor Colvin and Councilmember Banks McLaughlin about asking some questions about that, but is there anything that you guys can do right now to adjust those thresholds that you would recommend? I think you just told Dino no.
We said that we would, our recommendation was to wait for the Safe Streets for All Study. However, I think what I'm hearing you all say is that what we can come back is to provide you a year-by-year analysis of what petitions were in the pipeline and why they didn't make it through the pipeline to include signatures. For example, 100% is required of those immediately around the speed hump. How many of those were rejected? Because we only got three versus four, so on and so forth. Or if the threshold was 70%, we were successful in getting 68% and not 70. We can come back with that sort of data related to the signatures. In terms of the thresholds regarding the speed limits and the volumes and so on, those are more guided by MUTCD, and that's what we wanted to do, peer city analysis, and come back to you and give you more information related to that. But certainly from the process, in terms of signatures, we can come back and tell you year by year what was successful and what was not successful.
But the threshold question is not something you're gonna be able to speak to until next year, is what you said.
The threshold question was what we were hoping to wait till Safe Streets for All is completed, and that was going to be an analysis across many cities in North Carolina.
She's talking about on the speed analysis and the best practices for that. Now, if there's a council policy discussion that says instead of 80% or 70% of the signatures, you only need 60%, that's what she said that she can come back with.
Well, I think that's agreeable. You gave us a menu of options previously, and I know they had varying levels of efficacy and cost. Can we also include in this follow-up that we're talking about the likelihood that they can be included as options for the people? And then we can all just say 10 no together, that we can do both? Councilmember colleagues, you don't want to have a menu? We only want speed bumps?
She led made a recommendation to come back with more data. We can do that regardless of what the vote is. The thing that I want to say is I think we have enough direction to bring this back to you at your November work session for further direction, unless there's some vote against it. But I want to amplify something that Sheila said. This is not just the city of Fayetteville's traffic management plan. This is based upon a nationwide best practices. While I don't want to say that this is, and we know y'all get the calls. We know y'all get the calls. We know that the residents don't understand, know that they want action, they want more. Councilmember Hare, again, when he was my council member, I know my neighbors, Gene, Colbert, and others, they were beating us down over it. But there also is just some basic information, too, that I was unaware of as to how the 100% worked or the 70%. So we may need to actually draw a map to show you that if you're putting it in front of, let's say, Councilmember Jensen's house, then 100% is me, the mayor, Mr. Hare, Ms. Green, and Ms. McNair. If you can't get 100% of the immediate neighbors, is that something that your other neighbors, the other five or six who had to vote, would want yes or no? So what my suggestion is, if you allow us to bring this back, so we can actually show you a visual of what 60% looks like, what 70% looks like on a street, and we'll be happy to also use the data that Sheila said provided. So for the ones that didn't get 100%, we can come back and shade it. Ones that get 70%, we can come back, not necessarily, like you in this house said no, but we can show you what a graphic of that might look like. And we can actually start potentially with the neighborhood as well.
And to that point, I think that's why that's useful, because let's say it's been eight months, and now you got a new neighbor, or you've got nobody there, they're deployed, or they...
100% will yield here in the street.
Yeah, okay. All right. Councilmember Thompson, then I think Mayor Protem's got...
Let me just add this much, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know how many people have gone through this process again, but most of the things that has been mentioned are already online. You can go online and figure out how many people in your neighborhood have signed. You could go online and see a diagram of what individuals in front that need 100% have signed or haven't signed. So we're just asking stuff that she's already done. What I'm trying to get us to get to the point is, we have to, we already have the data. The data already says that they qualify. It's the process.
Yes.
That we have to get to. Let's get to the process.
Yes, sir. So I think we're saying the same thing. So when they come back, they will show us, instead of 100% cooperation for the immediate households, this is what it looks like at 80%.
I got that, Mr. Mayor, but I think where most people are having a problem is, we don't want to wait until fall of 2025.
No, no. She can come back with that immediately. That was not...
But the changes I'm talking about. We don't want to wait until fall of 2025.
The way they qualify a street is what they're talking about comes from the national standards. The policy in which we qualify.
Right.
A participant comes from us.
Right.
She can come back with that next work session.
Okay, sounds good.
You can do both at the same time. Am I explaining? Okay. All right.
So someone can make a motion, I guess.
I think we move on.
All right. So everybody okay with that? Just so the clerk is not confused. Those show of hands that, okay, with her coming back to review our current policy, but not necessarily...
And all the traffic calming options, too, right?
That's already online.
Well, well, if y'all want to make... Okay. All right. All right. All right.
Yes, yes.
All right. Well, it sounded like we all submitted, so thank y'all. I know y'all been up there for two, three hours now. All right. So Council, y'all okay moving 6.07 to November? All right. This is consistent motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by a bunch of you. Okay. So show of hands to move that. Mr. Hewitt, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. 6.08, nine, a councilmember request. They go for five minutes. The councilmember makes his, or her pitch to the council to get support to move it forward with more staff time and engagement. So with that, Ms. Jennifer is starting the five-minute clock.
Mayor Colvin, can I ask for a two-minute recess? I think some folks need to go to the restroom.
Do you?
No.
Yeah. All right.
I made a motion to have a two-minute recess. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Do you want one item to the restroom?
All right, never mind. All right. I was trying to help somebody else out. All right.
Trying to help somebody go to the bathroom. All right. All right. Let's go, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I was just waiting for the timer. Don't see it, but okay. Ladies and gentlemen.
Open the dog.
Of the jury. Y'all know that Fayetteville's a Tier One county, don't y'all? Cumberland County's a Tier One county. And I know that everyone on this council wants us to improve on that status. A way to address that, I believe, nay, I know, is when we have a critical mass of our citizens working good jobs, who are secure in quality housing, and are able to effectively care for their children. Only when, only then, will we bring our city and our county all the way up to Tier Two, and maybe get like Pinehurst and Moore County and get to Tier Three. The way we do that is we gotta attack it from a multitude of angles. And I think one of those angles has to do with the issues I see every day, every morning at the Cumberland County courthouse. We've all heard the saying that it's expensive to be poor. And when I see that folks are struggling to maintain their vehicles appropriately, and oftentimes are having to pay sort of a tax on that with fees and things that are at the courthouse, I want to think that there's a better way. We've also been reminded every quarter of issues with our stop and search numbers and how all of us want to see us improve on that front. It's an issue that is not unique to the city of Fayetteville when it comes to the state of North Carolina. It's not an issue unique to North Carolina when it comes to the entire country. And there are other communities that have had success in addressing those issues. So my request today is our favorite councilmember request to make during work sessions, a request for information. I've been in touch with some experts in this issue, and they've offered to come to Fayetteville and to share with us their successes. That includes members of law enforcement who've gone around and spoken on this issue. So despite what maybe some folks have heard, there is no request for a change of policy today. In fact, we can all decide whether after receiving the information, what works for Fayetteville and what doesn't work for Fayetteville. I think there's a world where our city staff, to include our chief of police, can say, again, once we've received the information, what he believes works for Fayetteville and what we can actually do here in Fayetteville. So in the meantime, if you guys can, you know, review the request that's listed, I'd like an opportunity, as early as the next work session, I'll certainly leave it up to the body if you guys would like to do it differently and have small group meetings or some other date in mind for a special meeting, but I think the November work session works just as well for us to carve out some time to receive that information from folks that have had success with it in their own communities. The concept, of course, again, are driving equality laws, and I hope that if there's any questions in these last two minutes that I can address them, especially to dispel any sort of misinformation or rumors about my request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councilmembers. About a minute 53 to go. Any questions, comments?
In that case, Mayor Colvin, I just ask that we move to previous question. I ask that we...
I just ask that we move to find consensus to receive this information at the next work session.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Benevente to move this to, all right, seconded by Councilmember Mahndros. All right. Discussion on that consensus? Councilmember McNair?
It's just information.
Yeah, I think what he's asking is to have the Philadelphia elected officials, Denver, Colorado, current chief or previous chief, and to speak.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
All right. All right. Look to you for action, council. Who we missing, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember McNair.
All right. Councilmember McNair. All right. Six-four, okay. So what conversation will take place on the next work session? All right. Moving to next item. Redo the clock.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Again, my preamble to my last motion applies to this as well. I think the day that we can reach a critical mass of ridership with our mass transit is the day that folks can make the decision to not get behind the wheel if their vehicle is not, you know, street legal as DMV has defined it. If we can have the most convenient option for getting around the city of Fayetteville to be public transit, I believe that we can make sure that more people are keeping their money in their pockets and able to improve. So I don't believe that's something that we can change this work, this year or this council term, but I would like to direct staff, you know, to show us what the benchmarks would look like in five years, or maybe even over a course of 10 years, to where the more convenient option for folks to get around is public transit. When we go to Washington, DC, that's an example that I give, but no matter what city I'm in, you know, Councilmember Jensen and I were in California, LA, the other day, and I used the public transit to leave the airport and get to downtown LA. Traffic, traffic there was such that Uber, which cost $60, $70, was gonna take me longer to get downtown than the public transit was, which was only gonna cost me $5 once I got on the two, three buses. It was the more convenient option for me. I'm not saying that Fayetteville has the issues of traffic that LA does, but I don't know. Maybe one day, you know, that's almost an interesting issue to have to face. But again, I want us to see us get to a point where the most convenient option to get around the city is transit, because things are, buses are moving very often, the sprawl is in, you know, all the places that people need to go. And again, I don't think we're gonna get there anytime soon, but perhaps our staff can work on giving us those benchmarks. I'm not sure what the current transit budget is, but if they were to say to us that, hey, if we had a benchmark in two years from now, that the budget was this, that we recruited this many drivers, that we, you know, were able to move at this particular pace, that we could start to see, you know, ridership improved to a number that we can really brag about. So that's the point of, that's the basis for the request, and I think that transit can be a solution to that issue. So my request is to direct staff to come back to us with some information about how we can make transit in this community the most convenient option for travelers in the next five years. The answer to that could mean, you know, no costs to being able to ride, because we've supplemented that through the budget. And again, we get that money back when people aren't spending it, you know, dealing with issues of registration and insurance and things like that with their vehicles. So I think that we put money back into the community when we kind of invest in options for transportation. Thank you.
So I did have a question. I see Councilmember Hare had a question quickly. So I think Ms. Tiffany's here. I think she has made it a point to try to move transit from need to a desired mode. What is specifically, is your... What is specifically is your request asking that?
And so, I mean, I can certainly ask Ms. Neal. I think I emailed her this request ahead of time, too. So, I hope she's, you know, got a chance to think about it some more. Can you see us in five years getting to that point where the majority of people who need to get around town look at...
But what's your request specifically?
Well, for her to come back with a way to do that in a much quicker turnaround than just... I mean, it's one thing to say, hey, we want to always improve ridership sort of as an open-ended sort of growth thing over time. It's another thing to say that we've got a... You know, we're almost putting some deadlines and some benchmarks that are aggressive when it comes to getting us to that point. Um, so, hopefully that makes sense.
In 2022.
They doing good over there. Those buses look good running around here.
Do you feel like that is based on certain budgetary growth, right? I mean, that you're anticipating over the course of the next two, three, four, five, 10 years? What would be the difference between what is your current budget and then what does it look like at year 10?
Increase in human capital and manpower. But we have all that contained right in the transit.
So, at the 10-year mark, when you've executed your plan, what is the budget?
I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I can get that to you.
Can you give me like a big number? Definitely 50 million, definitely 100 million?
I don't want to give you a number, I'm sorry. It's in our plan. I could have it to you by the end of the day.
I got you.
If you give me five minutes, I can pull it up.
Is there any world where we can speed that up? If we said, hey, those are the benchmarks between now and 10, but if we have a different sort of calculus around the money it's gonna make us, that you would see that coming even sooner?
Time's up, buddy, I'm sorry. Ms. Tiffany is... Thank you for that, Councilmember. At the end of the request, I mean, I think we're headed in that direction, so did you...
I'd like for us to get even more... So, yeah, I'll make this the motion in that case that whatever the plan is, we cut it in half because we're gonna do it that much faster. That'd be my request.
All right. All right, Council. Thank you, Councilmember Benavente, all good stuff.
Is there a vote? I just made a motion.
I don't...
There's a second.
Okay, all right. All right, let me say this during the discussion phase. I am not in... I am not opposed to us having a better transit system. We have a 10-year plan that we've invested in. We're implementing it, and I have the utmost confidence that Ms. Tiffany will do it. So, when I vote no, it is because this is just, to me, a duplication.